Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mrs. Carmody. Mrs. Carmody.
Oh, yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
Uh, Mrs. Cipriano.
Here.
Mrs. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Nuski. Mr. Dernoski.
Here.
Mr. Fadwa.
Here.
And Mr. Oshana, he's here too.
Here.
Okay, and Mr. Canellin, you're here, Mr. Medancy. And Mrs. Canellin?
She will not be here right now.
And I believe, uh, Mr. Walsh is also on line.
Yes, I'm here.
So we are all.
Mr. Missina is here, how about Mr. Sheldrick?
I'm here.
And then.
I'm here too.
We're also, everybody on the board members are here.
But we are all here, the board is all here.
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Carmody, we're all set to go, Mrs. Carmody.
Okay, thank you very much, Linda.
You're welcome.
All right, I am going to call this meeting to order. Trevor, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Trevor? For a thing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, Trevor. Tonight is probably one of our most meaningful significant nights. We have a celebration of excellence, and I will turn that over, I believe, to Mr. Canellin.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody, I appreciate it. Yes, this has been, uh, this has been good look at all the people. Hi, everybody.
Hi, everybody that I can't see.
It's been great to watch our, uh, our students filter in and then our, our staff members. Um, we really have, uh, I think, an amazing, amazing group of students, and this is just a sample of the amazing students that we have.
Right.
So, uh, what we do, and students, you're here because the board and the administration and your teachers love to recognize student accomplishments. And this is a way to do it in a very, in a very public way, a very public format of acknowledging these. And we know that you certainly don't do it without your parents. We hope that parents and family members are in the background and, uh, joining you. Uh, now, I can't see the picture, Sarah Mead, are you, wave to me for a minute if you're here, sir. Oh, there you are.
I'm here.
There, Sarah has her cheering section in the background, she was with us.
Oh.
Right, so if you have family members, students, if you have family members and you want to encourage them to be in the background and cheer you on, feel free to, feel free to do that. So we would like to start off this evening's celebration of excellence. We have, uh, four groups of students, and then we also have a senior student rep on the Board of Education, all of whom we are honoring this evening. Our first group of students that we are going to honor are our CIAC Scholar Athletes, and I am going to ask, uh, Mr. Rissler, who is our Athletic Director, if he would step forward, only figuratively speaking, obviously, and, uh, introduce our students for us. Students, with, the way we're going to do this is that you'll be recognized, and then a board member, and you, you've received your certificates already, I believe. Yes? Yes. Okay. Uh, not everyone is nodding, have you all received your certificates? I think we had that delivered, yes, okay, fantastic. So you will, you will be, uh, recognized, in this case, Mr. Rissler will say, uh, a few words about our, our two students who are our Scholar Athletes, and then, uh, one of our board members will actually read what is on the certificate, uh, and then everyone can just stay in the meeting, and we'll go to our next group of students, and we'll proceed all the way through. Okay, so, Mr. Rissler, if you please.
Thank you, Mr. Canellin, thank you, Mrs. Carmody and your colleagues and the board for having us here tonight. As I echo Mr. Canellin, I love seeing all the athletes out here on the call, so thanks for joining us and your families. Um, in the athletic office, we have a sign that says, "Academics plus athletics equals success." And tonight, with the two Scholar Athletes that you're just about ready to meet, it epitomizes the powerful combination of excellence in the classroom along with excellence in the athletic field or pool or track or wherever. So, tonight, I'm gonna start off with ladies first. Our first recipient was the CIAC Female Athlete of the Year, named by Sutherland High School in conjunction with the CIAC, uh, at a banquet on May, it would have been a banquet, but it was a virtual program on Channel 61 on May 4th. Both of these next two athletes were celebrated throughout the state with their colleagues. So starting up with our female athlete, she's a number one ranked student in the class of 2020. And in addition to her incredible academic prowess, Sarah's had an illustrious athletic career. By the way, let me say that the mystery is over, Mr. Canellin just, after she was here, Sarah Mead is our Female Student Athlete of the Year, Scholar Athlete of the Year. Sarah, congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
And I just want to celebrate with you, in addition to her academic accomplishments, she had, she had two of her years in high school, she was a three-sport athlete in the sports of swimming, girls volleyball, and outdoor girls' track. And the last two years, she focused on swimming, record-breaking performances in, on the girls' swimming and diving team. Just an incredible, uh, young lady, who you'll hear more about later in tonight's agenda, as Mr. Canellin pointed out. But let me just simply said, I asked Sarah very quickly, what was her most memorable experience in high school? And she said, I, I, I still can't believe it. She said, "The practices with my teammates and my coach leading up to the state championship meets." So, I've been around for a while, but I've never heard anyone say their favorite part was practice. And I have to tell you, Sarah, that's very impressive, what, what you told me. Congratulations to Coach Tuttle on that, for what you did, for what he did to make that memorable for you with your teammates. So, uh, Sarah, I would like you to just let everybody know what your plans are for next year academically. Could you do that, please?
Uh, yeah, um, right now, I'm set to go to UConn. I'm majoring in business, and I also got accepted into the Special Program in Law, um, which I'm really excited about.
Wow, that's great.
So ladies and gentlemen, one, okay, we'll, we'll go to Mrs. Clark later to do the certificate. Now I'm gonna go on to Jacob, Jacob for a second. Jacob Delmonte is our, our, uh, male CIAC Scholar Athlete of the Year. Jacob is already in the top 10 in class, he's ranked in the number seven rank, student athlete in, at Sutherland High School. This might be history tonight, this is something for Blue Knights athletes to strive for every year, but this is an incredible moment for Sutherland High School to have two of our athletes in the top 10. So with Jacob, he has also been a three-sport athlete three of his four years. Obviously, there's no way he would have been a three-sport athlete this year, although we would have given him credit for it, but he just, he's played football for four years. Uh, basketball, he's played for three, and he would have played baseball this year, of course, for four as well. So he would have earned 11 letter years of, of, uh, of course, participation. And he, uh, he is an incredible athlete, and next year, uh, he'll be playing baseball at the college level. So, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna let Jacob now say a few words and tell you where he's going next year. Jacob.
Yeah, uh, next year, I'll be attending WPI, and I'll be majoring in civil engineering, and like you said, I'll be playing baseball as well.
Nice. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jacob.
Well, let me go back to Sarah, if I may. Hello, Mead family, I see your grandparents are there, hi Fran. Um, and I am just, to see that your, um, award is the Certificate of Excellence to Sarah Mead, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Sutherland Public Schools, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Excellence for the 2019-20 CIAC Female Scholar Athlete, Girls Swimming and Diving. In witness whereof, the seal of the Sutherland Board of Education and the signature of the Board of Education Chairperson and Superintendent of Schools is here unto affixed on this 11th day of June 2020. Congratulations, Sarah, well done.
Thank you so much.
And now for Jacob. Jacob, I'm slightly familiar with WPI, I had a son who played football for them. It is a wonderful school, it's hard, I'm telling you right now, but you will love it. So, on your certificate, it says, "Certificate of Excellence to Jacob Delmonte, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Sutherland Public Schools, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Excellence for the 2019-20 CIAC Male Scholar Athlete for Football and Baseball. In witness whereof, the seal of the Sutherland Board of Education and the signature of the Board of Education Chairperson and the Superintendent of Schools is here unto affixed on this 11th day of June 2020." Well done, Jacob, well done. Congratulations.
Excellent, well, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Clark, and congratulations both Sarah and Jacob, and it's really, it's great that you were both able to join us here this evening. We would love for it to be in person, and, uh, perhaps when we're back to a bit of quote-unquote normalcy, we'll be able to have you come back with us at another time, perhaps, perhaps next year at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So we are going to move on to our next group of students. Now, this is a fairly large group of students. Uh, and at the, uh, at the end, Mr. Brown is going to read from the certificate. Mr. Brown, you do not have to read 14 certificates. You can, you can.
I was just going through all the names, too.
Well, you can read, you can, you can read all the names, you don't have to read all of the certificates. You can read one, I think you can read one. Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
You wanna read all 14, you certainly can. But I, I'm, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Rissler for a minute, but I wanna say, what an amazing, amazing accomplishment for this group of young women. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rissler, not only do we have Class L Champions with us tonight, we have State Open Champions, correct? Am I, am I stealing your thunder if I, if I can say?
Go right ahead.
First time in the history of the Sutherland High School Gymnastics Program, right?
Absolutely.
That, that's amazing, congratulations to all of you girls. I think that's, that's just an amazing accomplishment, we applaud you for that, thank you. And, uh, and Mr. Rissler, I know I stole a little bit of what you were going to say, but I, I was pretty excited about that.
You have every, you have every right to do so, congra, congratulations to the girls. They did make history this year. The Sutherland Gymnastics Program has been terrific over the years. As a matter of fact, their coach, who you're gonna meet in one moment, she was a member of the team herself when she was a student at Sutherland High School, and they were many, many times state champions, but they were never state open champions like this year. So these girls won both championships at the state level this year, both the class championship and the state open. February 29th at Jonathan Law, they outlasted Fairfield Ludlow to win the classical championship, and then they dethroned the perennial champion, Woodstock Academy, by beating them by about, uh, five hundredths of a point at the championships at New Milford on March 7th, incredible performance that it was. So, without further ado, I'm gonna introduce the head coach of the team, Kathy, Cassidy Chamberlain. Cassidy?
Hi, everyone, um, so before I introduce the team, I did just wanna first thank Mr. Canellin and the Board of Education and everyone else in this meeting for taking the time to celebrate the team's accomplishments with us tonight. And also, Mr. Rissler, thank you for coordinating this and just being such a strong support, uh, system for our team this year. So, I'm gonna quickly introduce the team as quick as I can, and I guess, girls, just like wave when I call your name, and hopefully, people will be able to see you. You guys are really small in life, as well. So, first, I, uh, have an assistant coach, Marilyn Smorbert, who is here, and I don't know what I'd do without her, so thank you, Mary, for all your help this season, especially while also, um, generally full-time nursing, so Marilyn, I don't know if you read her so far. And then, our freshman class, we have Maddie Pedler, Sam Fryler, Tori Harrington, Taylor Kelly, Kelsey Lamson, Kelsey Salerno, Vanessa Stein, Katie Boyer. And then our sophomore class, we have Casey Fusco and Riley Leclair. Juniors, we have Kelly Karney, our team manager, Mary Green, and our three captains, who are Wizzy Boyer, Kealan Leifer, and Ally Reeves. And then our well-seen girl was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Kat Drexler, and just of note, Kat is, uh, committed to Quinnipiac's, um, Division One Gymnastics and Gymnastics Program next year, so congrats to Kat on that, and Kat for her. Both of you girls. And, uh, a few words about the team, I, I did want to, again, congratulate them for their Class L title and for making history as state open champs, and obviously, those are huge accomplishments in themselves, but I also did just wanna point out, um, you know, the hard work that went into it, day in and day out for these girls, and the work that they put in developing on their mental toughness, on their skill sets, on their physical strength. But I think that our number one goal from the start of the season was to just build a really strong team camaraderie and to, um, build a family in the gymnastics team at SHS, and I feel like we really achieved that this year, which is why we had the success that we did. So, um, I wanna congratulate the girls on all the small things that people don't see behind the scenes and, and all the work that they put in this season, and we have a very strong core coming back next season, so hopefully, all of this will work out so we can go back for round two and try to cash that ticket into New England's next year and see what we can do there. So, congrats again, you deserve it, and thank you to everyone in the meeting for, for celebrating with us.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I wanna thank Cassidy for reading the list of names. I would have probably taken an hour because I probably recognize half of them relatives, but, um, I would do wanna read the certificate for Catherine, whose grandparents are dear friends of mine. Uh, the Certificate of Excellence to Catherine Dreschler, uh, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Sutherland Public Schools, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Excellence for the 2019-2020 Girls Gymnastic Team, the CIAC State Open and Class L Champion. A witness whereof, the seal of the Sutherland Board of Education and the signature of the Board of Education Chairperson and the Superintendent of Schools is here unto affixed on this 11th day of June 2020. So congratulations, and I was also struck by how young your team is, you have one senior, so we'll hope to see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, if I could, Mr. Canellin, I just wanted to point out that this team as the Connecticut Champions would have been competing in the New England Championships in Massachusetts, but obviously, due to the pandemic and us leaving school after March 13th, the, the event was the next day on the 14th, and it did not happen. But that's something Mr. Brown will go for next year, so, the New England Championships. So I just wanted to make sure that they knew that they qualified for the New England's. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, congratulations, girls. Well, that's, uh, that's pretty cool, everything. We really look forward to, we look forward to hearing from you next year, certainly. Um, now, our third group, we're gonna shift from athletics for a moment, and we're going to go to, uh, something that's called E-Cyber Mission. We've had some winners, and I'm going to call on Mr. John Duffy, who is our K-12 Science Coordinator, to talk a little bit about it, and I believe he, he will introduce, uh, our teachers, Katie Saltis and, uh, and Tony Rock. But Mr. Duffy, if you would, please.
All right, thanks, Mr. Canellin. Um, just a little background, uh, E-Cyber Mission is a web-based STEM competition that's for grade six through nine. Um, it's part of the, uh, US Army Educational Outreach Program, and it focuses on students, um, designing solutions to problems that they identify within their community, and, and actually coming up with prototypes and submitting, it's all submitted electronically. Um, and we've had some very good success over the, the past few years with that, uh, in large part due to the two teachers who are on this, uh, meeting tonight, who will introduce their students. Um, we had a, a team finish second in the state, um, in, in grade six from, uh, Kennedy Middle School, and a team finish first in the state for grade six from Dipalo Middle School. So I'd like to introduce first, um, Katie Saltis, uh, sixth grade, uh, superstar at Kennedy, who has, uh, year in, year out mentored students to, uh, placing first or second in this competition. And she can talk a little bit, she'll introduce the students and also tell you, I think, what they won. So, Katie?
Sure, um, hi, everyone, um, I'm going to introduce Ananya Rajiv. I see Ananya on your family, hi.
Hi.
Um, Bella.
There she is.
Where's Bella? Hi, Bella.
Hi.
And Victoria, Paco.
Hi.
Hi, Victoria and family. So they, these girls decided that they want to, um, create some sort of recycling bin for a local fast food restaurant, because of the, a lot of those restaurants, um, they can't recycle their plastic because it's dirty, so they came up with something that would rinse out that plastic before it gets recycled. So HQ in town actually donated one of their bins, and then these girls, um, worked with that and created something to wash the recycling. Um, so, I just wanna say, I'm really proud of you girls, you work so hard in school and outside of school. You should be really proud of yourselves as well. So they won, um, second place for the state, so, nice job, girls.
And I should add that they also won a, a $500 savings bond for each of them.
Great.
So, we also have, uh, Tony Anne Rock, one of our other superstar sixth grade teachers, uh, over at Dipalo, who, um, had, who mentored the winning team in the state. Um, and I'm gonna turn it over to her to talk, uh, to introduce those students and, and talk a little bit about their, uh, design. But I, I should add, I was really, um, excited to see that their inspiration for their design came from a fourth grade field trip that we do every year, uh, sponsored by SEF, to Slope Camp Sloper, one of our science days. Um, at Camp Sloper inspired them in grade six to undertake this design for which they won. So I know Tony Anne's in the meeting, Tony Anne, if, uh, if you could introduce your theme and tell us a little bit about what they did.
Okay, thank you, John, thank you, everyone. Um, so the name of our E-Cyber Mission team at Dipalo was Echo Saviors. That was a name that the team made up themselves and decided on themselves. There's three sixth grade boys, Nelson Dong, who I don't believe is here tonight, um, but also Ethan Hoffman, who I see him sitting there looking very excited. Wave to us, Ethan. Maybe he's frozen, okay. And, um, Sean O'Sullivan, who last time I looked, I saw his icon. Oh, he's on, he's on, hi, Sean. So, these boys, um, they did get their inspiration from their trip to Camp Sloper, where they noticed a sinkhole, and they decided, you know, let's see if there's a way to fix that. They did a lot of research and designed a solution. It was amazing to watch them go through the process. Like, every lunch period they came, uh, November through February, and then after school in February as well, um, watching them at the age of 11 or 12 to design and build and fail and figure it out and redesign and then make it better and figure it out again. It, it, they did it many, many times, like true scientists and engineers. And I just think they're remarkable students, and I'm very, very proud of them. Congratulations, you guys.
Yes.
Oh, and they won $2,000.
Yeah.
Just had to get that in.
Pretty amazing. Again, wanted to thank Katie and Tony Anne for their mentorship, uh, and certainly, uh, congratulate the kids again on base, uh, uh, an independent project that they took on that really hits, uh, just about all the Cs that we tried to in the district. They, they were creative, they, they had to be good critical thinkers and problem solvers. Um, they, they were collaborative, I mean, it was just a, a really good effort on, on all their parts. And thanks again to the teachers, because it doesn't happen without their efforts in the classroom and out. So, thanks again, and thanks for having us and, and recognizing the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic, very good. And for this, uh, we have Mr. Oshana, longtime member of the Board of Education, will read one of the certificates, right? So let's know what that says.
The first certificate is a Certificate of Excellence for Ananya, Bella, and Victoria, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Sutherland Public Schools, is hereby awarded this Certificate of Excellence for being a statewide second-place winner with 2020 E-Cyber Mission Project. How often local fast food restaurants don't recycle because they can't recycle dirty plastics? In witness whereof, the seal of the Sutherland Board of Education and the signature of the Board of Education Chairperson and the Superintendent of Schools is hereby affixed on this 11th day of June 2020. The only, um, silver lining I can see to what we're going through right now is we're seeing that the, the earth can actually heal itself, and we're seeing that through the changes in our, uh, what we, the human beings, are doing. To take on a project like this in terms of recycling at, uh, the age, uh, that you're at right now is so. To see what you're doing for the good of the community and good of our, of our world, congratulations to all three of you, you're doing a great job, keep up that hard work. And the other, uh, Certificate of Excellence is for Ethan, Sean, and Nelson, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Sutherland Public Schools, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Excellence for being statewide first-place winner and a regional finalist for the 2020 E-Cyber Mission Project, designing a solution for sinkholes. And hereby witness, uh, whereof, the seal of the Sutherland Board of Education and the signature of the Board of Education Chairperson and the Superintendent of Schools is here unto affixed on this 11th day of June 2020. Your teacher mentioned, you designed, you failed, you redesigned. Nobody learns anything, nobody gets ahead in this world unless you fail and you reapply. It's not a failure, it's what you do if you fail and how you respond to that, and going on and taking that next step and continuing to work towards making this thing work is, is, is a tremendous, uh, statement towards you and your perseverance and your resilience. Uh, taking on a project that's gonna benefit our community and our YMCA is fantastic. I will add, I have a huge sinkhole on that side of my house. If you feel like you wanna take on another project, fly on over. It's a, it's a great sinkhole, you could use what you've learned in this last one. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Oshana. Uh, and, you know, I do have to mention, our former Athletic Director, prior to Mr. Rissler coming onboard, always said, "The word 'fail,' first attempt in learning."
True.
Right? I believe that matches with Mr. O, Mr. Oshana's words. That's, that's the epitome of science. We know right now that we have countless scientists around the world who are engaged in clinical trials to do what, to try to find a virus to combat COVID-19. And I will bet you that they've had many, many failures, uh, and there are some successes, and they're hoping for more successes in the future, but that's, that's really the essence of it. So thank you, Mr. Oshana, for mentioning that. Now, we have four seniors, I bet you guys thought we forgot about you, right? We figured you wouldn't be. Now, Mr. Duffy knows that we wouldn't forget about you. Now, we have two members of our high school administrative team here this evening who are going to introduce our four students for us. Uh, Mrs. Diane Holstgrube and Mrs. Leah Clark, both here this evening. And I, I will say that Mr. Pepe was not able to be with us this evening, and I know this is killing him, he's actually home rehabbing right now, recovering. And I, and the silver lining there, uh, for Mr. Pepe, and I will tell him this, Mrs. Holstgrube and. there, uh, for Mr. Pepe, and I will tell him this, Mrs. Holzgrube and Mrs. Clark, that it takes two of you to replace Mr. Pepe, obviously. So I will turn this over to Mrs. Holzgrube and Mrs. Clark. Thank you.
Great. It's great to see everyone tonight. And it is with great pleasure that we introduce the top three students at Suddington High School for the 2019-2020 school year. Emily Swanson is the SHS class essayist. She has an extraordinary work ethic and is goal oriented. Emily will be attending the University of New Haven in the fall where she will major in forensic science. Mrs. Migliaro, her AP English teacher describes her as thoughtful and perceptive and willing to push herself beyond her own boundaries. These are all qualities that will serve her well in college and in life. Congratulations, Emily, on all you have accomplished.
Hi Zach. I'm introducing you next. It's really great to see you. Hi Mom.
Hi.
So Zach Coley is Suddington High School salutatorian and he will be attending George Washington for pre-med and chemistry, which I have a hard time wrapping my brain around. And he is also the class of 2020's historian. Mrs. Gamson, I talked to her tonight and she described you as absolutely inspirational. And you had her for three different subjects. And she described you as a natural leader who loves learning and you enjoy challenges so you can grow as a learner and as a person. And I know you as someone always willing to offer a very friendly smile in the hallways. And I miss seeing you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
As we heard earlier, Sarah Mead is SHS's valedictorian. She will be attending UConn and majoring in business. Sarah has also been accepted into UConn's special program in law and all students accepted into this program will be invited to join UConn's honors program. We all know that Sarah is an accomplished academic, but we also heard about her athletic accomplishments so far this evening. She is also a four-year swimmer, school record holder, and all conference, all four years, and Suddington Scholar-Athlete of the Year. I also learned that her final project for AP Politics and Government was how to decrease urban homelessness, which Mr. Tuttle describes as incredibly detailed and thorough. He said that nothing is the bare minimum with Sarah. She always goes above and beyond. Congratulations, Sarah, on your hard work and all you have accomplished.
Thank you so much.
Our, our top three students, uh, three of the certificates, we are going to turn to our chairperson, Mrs. Carmody, if you would please.
And I'll start with Sarah. And Sarah, I'm, I'm, I know you have your grandparents there and I'm sure you inherited everything from them. They're wonderful people, Sarah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations on everything, Sarah. Sarah Mead, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Suddington Public Schools, is hereby awarded the certificate of excellence, the class of 2020 valedictorian, in witness there, whereof, the seal of the Suddington Board of Education, the signature of the Board Chairperson and the Superintendent of Schools, is here unto affix on this 11th day of June 2020. My sincere, sincere congratulations, Sarah. Got a great cheering father back there too.
Thanks.
You all did get your certificates, did you not?
Yeah, we got.
Each one of them? Mr. Canelon?
Yes, they were delivered, right? Zach, you got yours, right?
Yes, I do have.
All the students received them, yes.
Okay. I will read next, uh, for Trevor. No, not Trevor, wrong one. I did receive them. Hang on a minute. Um. Zachary? Where's Zachary? Okay. Having, Zachary, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Suddington Public Schools, is hereby awarded a certificate of excellence for class of 2020's salutatorian, in witness whereof, the seal of the Suddington Board of Education, the signature of the Board of Education Chairperson and the Superintendent of Schools, is here unto affix on this 11th day of June 2020. My sincere congratulations to you, Zachary.
Thank you.
And then to. Emily? Which, where's Emily? Wave to me, Emily, so I can. Is Emily there?
Yes.
Yes, she's there.
Oh, on the top. Hi Emily. Um, Emily Swanson is, uh, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Suddington Public Schools, is hereby awarded the certificate of excellence, the class of 2020 essayist, in witness whereof, the seal of the Suddington Board of Education, signature of the Board of Education Chairperson, Superintendent of Schools, is here unto affix on this 11th day of June 2020. To all three of you, I can't even begin to tell you how very proud we are as a Board of Education to even award this to you. I'm looking at your parents, your grandparents and your families. What you have achieved is unbelievable. I have no doubt that you will go on to be successful in any endeavor that you choose. Your kids have gone through a very, very difficult year. You've missed out so much, but boy, are you going to celebrate on that parade on Tuesday, right, kids? Right? Congratulations to all the families. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We're very proud of you. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. And now we have a very, very, very special, uh, celebration. And I'd be, I believe Mrs. Holzgrube is going to do this for us. But you know, Mr. Messina, we did save the best for last. And I am, I am.
I thought.
I am so pleased to see you dressed in your captain gown.
Where is he?
With your.
I dressed in my prom outfit last time. I figured I might as well dress in my captain.
Mr. Messina, you are always dressed for success. We know that.
Thank you.
We do have, you've been a, a, an absolutely wonderful, wonderful representative for the student body on the, on the Board of Education. I can't say enough good things about you. But I'm going to leave it to Mrs. Holzgrube who has, um, a, a, a little bit of an introduction and then we'll go back to Mrs. Carmody. Mrs. Holzgrube, if you will, please.
You bet. Hi Trevor.
I'm Mrs. Holzgrube.
So I understand you're going to be attending UConn for music education.
Correct.
You were also, uh, the voice of Suddington High School every morning where you not only delivered the essential news of the day, but you delivered a lovely dose of humor every day too, which I appreciated very much. And you started everyone's day off with a smile or a laugh, and that means a lot. So as a result of doing that though, you became pretty popular and for good reason too. But that was also, I think, an emblem of your leadership. And I talked to Mrs. Osias today and I entered, and, and I didn't realize, I mean, I knew you were part of the marching band, but I didn't realize how much. And she said that if she had to list everything, that we would be here an extraordinarily long time. But she let me know that you were the president of the band council in charge of running meetings and fundraisers. You were section leader in the band. But she said that what she appreciated and would remember most is your positive outlook on everything.
Right.
And that I know is going to serve you incredibly well, along with your wonderful sense of humor. So thank you for everything that you did for the whole school every morning. And thank you for your contributions, not only to the Board of Education, but to Suddington High School.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trevor.
And Mrs. Carmody, you again, please.
Yes. And Trevor has not received this certificate, has he?
No, I have. It's right there.
Oh, you do have it. Okay. So this certificate of excellence to Trevor Messina, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Suddington Public School, hereby awarded a certificate of excellence for student board representative, 2018 to 19, 2019 to 2020 school years. In witness whereof, the seal of the Suddington Board of Education, signature of the Board of Education Chairperson, Superintendent of Schools, is here, here unto affix on this 11th day of June 2020. Now, you know, Trevor, if we were in person, you know, I'd hug you. You know that.
Absolutely.
I cannot go without hugging you. But everything that, um, she said was so true. But all of us on the Board of Ed, we always, always looked forward to what your contributions were going to be. They were always so significant, so pertinent. Um, all three of our students were, um, but you just had that little touch that, you know, did make us laugh, um, did make us think twice. And we're going to miss you, Trevor. You're going to be successful in whatever you do because of your personality. I know that. Um, we wish you the very best. We're going to miss you. Um, it has been an absolute pleasure for the last two years. Good luck, Trevor.
Thank you so much.
I missed that hug, Trevor.
And, and Mr. Messina, there's, there's probably no way to stop you from doing this, but if you'd like to say a few words, you can.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, I was gonna save it later for the board report. Um, no, but I mean, just all in all, like, thank you so much for this opportunity. It's, it's really changed, changed my life, I think, because of, you know, the struggles that I've had with my autism and Asperger's, this kind of, you know, defied a lot of, um, norms that usually come with that disability. And I think that, you know, to be sitting here with the stuff that I've accomplished and the place that I am graduating with honors, going to UConn and doing all that was something that my doctor, uh, when they diagnosed me at the age of four, could have never imagined. And to have a supportive family and friends and I think that this position has really allowed me to make an impact, or the impact that I wanted to make on my school and my community. And I'm so grateful to all of you, um, from the administration to the students, to the Board of Ed, um, for helping me along that journey and allowing me to make the difference that I wanted to make on my school. And I can leave school now, um, with reassurance that I achieved my goal and that, um, everything will be okay, I guess. And, um, I thank you all so much.
You are so welcome, Trevor. So welcome.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you, Trevor.
Thank you so much.
Well, for all of our students who, who joined us this evening, we really are so pleased that you're able to join us. Thank you so much. We really wish that this was in person. As I said before, obviously it's not. The one thing you are missing out on though, is that we normally have pretty good cookies.
Great.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, normally, yeah. This is, this is the time when we usually have a break in the meeting and you get to mingle a little bit. Board members come down and chat with you, chat with members of your family, and you get to eat these fantastic cookies that Mrs. Walinski for our food service, uh, usually has produced. So we owe you cookies. Um, and you'll be welcome to come back when we are back in session and convening board meetings in the, in the public assembly room. We'll have you back. Maybe when you're all back, uh, after break. I understand a lot of colleges are, uh, starting their breaks right after Thanksgiving. So maybe that'll be a good time. Uh, we'll invite all of you back. We'll have prodigious amounts of cookies for everyone. So thank you all. Thank you all. And thank you all the staff members who have cookies and parents and family members who are all in the background. Thank you so much for supporting your students and supporting, supporting the efforts of the school. We just, we have a wonderful partnership. We have great families here in Suddington. We really do. That's one of the, one of the key pieces of the, of the success that we have for students. So thank you all very much. I think we'll probably take a, a break for a couple of minutes and let people. Leave the meeting if they would, they would like to. And then, of, of course, you're all welcome to stay. Public meeting. If you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to do that. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everyone. Been a pleasure.
Congratulate everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. That is just one of the highlights of the things that we do, right?
Yes, it certainly is. Yep. Great.
Really is. Yep. Uh, goodness. And Mrs. Holzgrube and Mrs. Clark, you, you weren't offended by the fact that I said that it took two of you to replace Mr. Pepe, are you? I mean, cause you're, neither one of you are actually very tall. Neither one of you are actually.
Say yes, say yes, say yes.
Right. You have to, you literally, someone would have to stand on the other person's shoulders to equal Mr. Pepe.
I'm trying to drive this to the dance.
He's also a very good principal, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy for that. I like working with him.
Uh, okay, Mrs. Carmody, I think we are turning it back over to, but can I, uh, can I, uh, add something now? One of the things that it's important to remember is that we do have, uh, because this is virtual, it's important if, uh, if Mrs. Carmody doesn't identify you ahead of time and you're speaking, if folks can just identify who they are.
Say your name. Yeah.
Hey, Tim.
Say your name.
Tim.
Prior to speaking. Yes.
It's David here. Can you admit me into the meeting? Um, I have to use another device. My laptop's dying.
Certainly. So you're gonna bop out and come back in?
Yeah, I'm already asking to join, but it's just.
I don't see you.
A limbo.
I see his name.
I see, I see the D, but I don't see.
I see the D, but I don't see.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see your picture, Dave.
Asking to join on my other device.
It is not, uh, recording it that way here. You might have to go back out and come back in, David.
Okay. I'll try that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Canelon, um, I have an agenda item to add to the meeting that, should I do that myself?
You certainly can do that. What would that be? What would that be, Mrs. Carmody?
That would be, uh, 10C, the teacher resident. Do you want me to add that?
That is actually on there, Mrs. Carmody.
Oh, okay.
Because, yes, but by purposes of explanation, we, we added that late and Mrs. Carmody already had her copy. So I just asked her to write it on, on her own copy. Yes, you're already there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Tim.
And I do not see, uh, Mr., Mr. Falvo attempting to re-enter yet.
No, I don't need a, let's see the screen. Do you all have, um, everybody on your screen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I don't.
Mrs. Carmody.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a way, there's a way that you can try and get all the people on your screen. So if you move your mouse.
Yes.
All right. So now that white bar at the bottom of your screen's gonna come up.
Move my mouse to the bottom of the screen?
Yep. And all the way on the right, there are three dots.
All the way on the right?
Next to the cat.
I don't see any dots, Trevor.
Next to present now.
Oh, yeah. Wait a minute. Yeah.
Now press on that.
Yeah.
Go to change layout at the top.
It, it said stop recording. Oh, change layout. Yeah, okay.
And then hit tiled.
Hey.
Hey, Trevor, nice job.
Good job, Trevor. It's a young person to help us.
Trevor, I still have the same screen. Trev.
You only have nine people showing, right?
I, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, eight people showing.
She's doing the math. She's doing the math.
Want me to try it again, guys? I don't know.
We'll have to, we'll have to have one of our technology folks attack that.
Oh, please. Technology spends their whole life at my house.
Well, now that you're up at the Cape, maybe they do want to visit you.
Yeah.
Plenty of room. Yeah, Trevor, I did it again. I changed the layout and I didn't, didn't change it, but that's okay.
Okay.
You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Now, is Dave Falvo back?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm back.
Okay. Does Dave Falvo outside Suddington Public Schools join?
Yes.
So we're ready to begin?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, we're all set.
All right. So my first, uh, order of business tonight would be approval of the minutes from the May 28th meeting. Have motion. All those, the saver?
Hi.
I.
Seconded that, please. Who seconded that, Dave?
Zaya?
Zaya, okay.
All set?
Thank you. Yep.
Let me see, I have not received, I have not received any emails, but what we can do, Mrs. Carmody, is if we have members of the public, I mean, I see that we have three phone calls in here right now, and I realize one is probably Mike Agnew from the Record Journal, I recognize the phone number, hello, Mr. Agnew. If we have anyone else from the public who would like to make a public comment, they can unmute their phone now, and the line will open, and you would just state your name and address and make your comment. So, if there is a second call, if there's anyone from the public who would like to make a comment, you can unmute your phone, that will open the line, state your name and address, and be able to make your comment. Okay, Mrs. Carmody, it does, it seems like we do not have public comment this evening in that form, and I received no emails, and as you know, we post it right on the agenda that said if you have public comment, you can email superintendent directly, so it looks as if we do not have any public comment this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Canelon, and I will continue. Communications from Board of Education members. Whose hand is that, Bob?
My hand is up, I think Zaya beat me, but anyway.
Go ahead, Bob, go ahead, Mr. Canelon.
No, it's hard for me to see.
Yep, you have Mr. Brown, Mrs. Cipriano, and Mr. O'Shaughnessy.
I don't see Missy at all on my screen.
Well, trust me, she had her-
She's there, I see, hi, Missy.
So, anyways, go ahead, Bob, and then I'll try to, you know, go ahead.
I've got two things. I attended a CDC webinar last Friday, which Mr. Canelon gave us the link to, I thought it was excellent. And then this Monday, attended a webinar, it's a question and answer with the State Education Commissioner through the Connecticut Education Association, which was also excellent. My comment for both of them is we have a lot of decisions to be made, which I think we all know, and the fall is gonna be a challenge. I do wanna also make a statement about the social justice. I know that the Social Justice Committee just came out with a letter, I would encourage the public to read the letter, and also, Mr. Bedancy pointed out, there's a link on the letter towards the bottom, which connects people to some of the work we've done, but I've been contacted by, I'm gonna say, a large number of people, former students and adults in town, about what we're doing. So, I wanna just real quickly publicly state some of the work that we've done, and this committee's met for the last year and a half, so we didn't just start this work. Committee was formed about a year and a half ago, so there's been a lot of really good and difficult work they've done. Just run through real quick a list, one thing is analyzing curriculum, we have a subcommittee which is looking for bias and racism and diversity in the curriculum. Every time now we meet on the curriculum committee, we ask questions about social studies and literature, about bias and racism. Second is examining minority hiring practices, I know we have, we're gonna deal later with a correct proposal, just a comment on that for the public, is one of the difficulties is there's not a lot of minority candidates who are coming to apply. So, one of the challenges is to go, and I know the state's working on this, and I believe West Hartford, is to recruit high school students, minorities, to pay for their college if they're willing to become teachers. A third issue is asking teachers and staff to self-evaluate their levels of bias and their inner biases. A fourth one is training teachers, how to teach about racism and how to handle student behavior that perhaps has bias or racism in it. A fifth one is we've read articles and books, some of them very challenging, there's one called White Fragility, which Mr. Bedancy suggested to me, very difficult book, but I would highly recommend it. A sixth one is we brought in Correct, they run this whole thing, and they are, and the committee itself is made up of many minority, both students and adults. And the last one is we have a lot of work still to do, but we are working on this, it's difficult work, I know Miss Cipriano's also on the committee, and Mr. Bedancy and Mr. Canelon, but anyway, I'm all set.
Okay, let me see, Zaya, did you have, Zaya or Dave Dernowski, I don't remember who had, your hand up next.
And Mrs. Cipriano, we've got Mr. O'Shaughnessy.
And my hand was up as well.
Mrs. Cipriano, Mr. Falvo, and Mr. Dernowski, did you have your hand as well? Yes, so we have one, two, three, four.
Let's go to Missy first, ladies first, go ahead, Missy.
Oh, that's so nice of you, thank you. There's a couple of things for me tonight, the first thing, two things I would like to mention, are two stellar students in Southington that have done very good work in the community again, my other had is Red Hawaii. So, here I am with Maddie Landry, who's a DePaulo student, who took a huge donation out for our community with her science project. It was amazing, she put her science project together, raised a bunch of money, and then dropped off a check to me this week, and it was, she went through her whole project, it was just amazing, and I just wanted to say thank you to her and recognize the DePaulo science team for putting forth that project. And also Madison Matthews, who's a rising freshman going to Southington High, she made math, and she sold them, and she distributed them throughout her whole neighborhood to protect them from COVID, and then she went into grocery shopping for us to make sure that we had students that she knew was in her community in need. So, I wanted to just thank both those students and recognize their efforts during this challenging time, and I have the privilege to do both of these things, to receive the benefits, so I can feed the community and recognize these great students for their efforts during the great time, so you guys should be really jealous of me.
We are, what wonderful, thanks to kids to tune in.
The other thing I wanted to talk about just real quick, and is the fact that, with everything going on, and this is near and dear to my heart, it was the 76th anniversary of D-Day, my father-in-law was drafted and was like a week shy of being part of that, and because of the things going on, we had really no time to recognize or study, and I'm sure there's many grandparents of our students that were sent off to war, and I just wanted to thank those families for their dedication and serving our country. There's so much going on, and the little thing that gets missed is the thing that may touch that other family, and I know it affects my family. And to segue into the next thing that affects my family is the racial tension that is happening in our country, and I just wanna speak as purely from my heart. I am a Board of Education member that happens to be a black woman in the town of Southington. I am honored to be and be elected to be part of this team. We have an amazing effort set before us with inequality that we know of, but I don't want anybody to forget that we have come further, and we have so much further to go, but I wouldn't be sitting here on this board, proud as I am, with the color of my skin, and the integrity that I have for my community without those people of color that went before me, and I don't want us to ever forget that. I don't want us to forget that we have students in our town that need the support, that need to fight, that's why we have our Social Justice Committee and our coalition that are working really hard to make sure that no child or family is forgotten about or has to face these things. And I want our families to know in our town that I am dedicated, along with everyone else on this board, and determined to make sure that our families and our students are heard whenever they need to, that if there's a mistake, or if there's something going on, there's gonna be a correction, because we wanna set the stage for a better community, a long-lasting change, not just for one day, not just for an hour to be heard, but for future generations, and we are all part of that change. And if we are willing to listen to one another, telling you, and I know that change can happen, that I know that love changes everything, I know that hatred is not something that is born, and I'm gonna end with this so we can go on, Nelson Mandela said, no one is born hating another person because of the color of their skin, his background, or his religious belief, it is a learned hate. So, if they can be learned to hate, they can learn to love. I think that we have an opportunity to learn to love if we listen to one another, and in spite of everything, and grow together, in our community, we can do it. So, that's it, that's mine.
Very well said, Missy, thank you very much, very well said, thank you. Mr. Dernowski, I think your hand was up?
I was, but Zaya was ahead of everybody, so, go ahead, Zaya.
I just wanted to take a minute and mention that this past Tuesday, DePaulo Middle School held its eighth grade award ceremony, Mr. Falvo and I were in attendance, and it was really exciting, because unfortunately, just like we saw tonight, these one-time-only events were virtual, this was a virtual event for the eighth grade students at DePaulo and in their awards. I wanna recognize the students because of all the hard work that they did, the parents, all the hard work that they did, the support that they gave them, but it was interesting also to watch, you know, Mr. Palmeri put this program together, and he made it a special night for these students, and then to watch his staff, the staff of that school, and it was kind of interesting to watch some of the competition between the three teams, when they were calling off a student's name, each of the teachers had signs, they were holding up their signs, congratulations, good luck, great job, for their team color, right? It was kind of fun to watch that competition, friendly competition, but it was exciting to watch this, it's unfortunate, like a lot of things, that these students had to do it virtually, but I wanna congratulate Mr. Palmeri and his team for making it into an event that I think these students will remember going forward, it was a really nice night, and it was, again, like we saw with some of the students tonight, we see our future, Missy, our future is in good hands with students like this because of what they've done and what they've been able to accomplish at this age, just think of what's coming out of them in the future, so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Now, is it Mr. Dernowski?
Okay, very, very good, thank you very much. I just wanna take a quick moment, Trevor, I just wanna, you know, again, personally, thank you for your participation with the board, what you've provided us with, both with basic information and some humor, and it's always worked out well, but I just wanted to touch on one thing. I've been on the board for a long time, I was on when the student rep was initiated, and I have to say, each year, year after year, the next incoming group of students seems to do as well, if not better, than the prior year, and this year is no different. Your leadership with the other two partners in crime here, I think you've set them up to succeed, I think they're gonna take over where you left off, and I'm looking forward to next year, I think the whole board is looking forward to next year, and to try and do what you've done. But again, good luck at UConn, I think you're gonna do well, and again, all the years that I've been associated with the board, with the student reps, every one of them has succeeded in college and gone on to a professional career, we've got a couple lawyers, we've got some doctor, we've got business leaders, and I feel that you're gonna be just as successful. So, again, good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Did I miss someone, because Dave Falvo?
Yeah, yeah, I have my hand up.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have some stuff to say tonight, but before I get to my prepared remarks, I do wanna thank Mr. Palmeri for putting on such a beautiful event on Tuesday night, as Mr. O'Shaughnessy mentioned, I was in attendance to the award ceremony that was held at DePaulo Middle School, well, virtually, at DePaulo Middle School on Tuesday night, and as somebody who attended that ceremony 10 years ago as a student, it was just such a great ceremony, even though we can't be together in person, it was, it was nice to have an event like that, so I wanna thank Mr. Palmeri for that. Now, for my prepared remarks, so, there's a couple things I wanna mention in my board communications, so, I loved my time in the Southington Public School system, I'd been out for only five years, so, not a long time ago, I was a student in the Southington Public School system, I met a lot of good teachers, staff, and people I am still friends with until this day. So, what I experienced with some of my classmates were the actions of a minority, and does not represent the values of the staff, students as a whole. So, the past couple of weeks have been heartbreaking for our country, the killing of George Floyd underscores that racism is so prevalent in our society. As a Latino male, growing up in the Southington Public System, I was often made fun of and outcasted for being the quote-unquote brown kid, I would often go home crying and so upset with the color of my skin. I would often wonder, why was I bored like this? This racist sentiment towards me in middle school where I was called other racial names and slurs that I do not wish to repeat tonight, it was heartbreaking. I didn't come to appreciate my Colombian slash Latino heritage until I went to Wilcox Tech, where I attended for two years during my freshman and sophomore year, where there were friends, students that looked like me. When I did return to Southington High School in 2013, once again, I was confronted by homophobic and racial slurs in my first month back at the high school. I want to make this clear, it is definitely not the actions of everybody, but the actions of some misguided individuals who I forgive today. And I do wanna thank Mr. Canelon and Mr. Bedancy for their work to equip our staff with diversity and equity training, especially with the Social Justice Coalition, I think that's a much-needed coalition, and that will only benefit the staff and students of our town. Secondly, with everything that is taking place in our world right now, many have forgotten, it is Pride Month, so to all our LGBTQ+ students in our school systems, never be, this message is for you, never be ashamed of your sexuality and gender, quite the contrary, embrace it, we are your allies. So, hopefully through the power of education, we can shape a more equitable future for all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing that, Dave, thank you very much. Do I have any other board members? Joe, is that your hand?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. Missy, very well said, and, you know, thank you for serving, I'm proud to be serving alongside every single one of our board members. Certainly, the past couple of weeks has been a great time for reflection, and a lot of, sort of, looking into what our own biases are and our own differences and things like that, what I have learned, and I guess this goes back to maybe about a year ago, you know, when we sort of discussed bullying and things like that, that it's, no matter how small the pebble, there's a ripple effect, and what happened a couple weeks ago with Mr. Floyd, if one person had intervened, I think right now would be a very different time in our history. And I cannot stress enough the importance of, as we teach our students, as our students learn, as we teach our students as parents, how important it is to empower our kids to speak up, to essentially stop that type of behavior. You know, again, I had an interaction with a young man, it was my junior year, and believe it or not, I was the kid that would often get picked on, and he stood up for me at one point, and, you know, I didn't really know him well, and just the fact that he stood up for me, it's, that always stuck with me. And, you know, I want our kids to know that they have the support of us as citizens in this town, as teachers, the staff, where if they see something and they speak up about it, we don't talk like that here, or, you know, we don't do that here, or be able to intervene, that, you know, that's, we really need to do that. I see Steve's comment about being an upstander and not a bystander, you know, again, taking that active role, so, you know, again, I'm proud of this community, I think we do things excellent here in Southington, and, you know, I wanna continue to move that football down the field, so. to move, move that football down the field, so.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Anyone that I missed? Sure, because, I'll, I'll continue then. I've got everyone on the board. Next is the communication from the administration. Canel?
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. I appreciate that. I just have, we have several things, but the first thing is, I just added a note. I, I put in your board packet a note that the, and this is a good thing. And I know, Mr. Dernowski, you will be pleased at this because it's always about facilities. The final payment application for the middle schools was approved by the Department of Administrative, by the Department of Administrative Services. And given the history from the state, I think that was almost lightning speed.
I would agree with that.
I would too.
Yeah, wonderful.
At any rate, now, I have to say that I, I really appreciate the comments of board members with regard to the issues that we are confronted with right now in our society. I, I sent you, and I, and I have a, I have a prepared statement, and I'm going to ask Steve to say a few words, even though I didn't tell him that ahead of time, sorry, Mr. Medancy, that I feel like I've lived this life before. You know, I was a kid growing up through the civil rights movement. We watched people, we watched leaders in this country, both of the Kennedys, John and Bobby Kennedy. We watched Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, be slain. I was living in North Haven. My parents were from New Haven. I lived in New Haven for a while. We walked the streets of New Haven where the Black Panther Organization had their headquarters during all the unrest. I am, well, I participated as a student in the movement against the war in Vietnam, not against the people in the armed services, but against the political will that drove our young people to foreign soil and killed almost 60,000. So, some of whom were slightly older than me, older brothers of friends. But be that as it may, I see the youth movement today as one that can help move us in the right direction because some of what we have been saying has been falling on deaf ears. And that's unfortunate in a country like this. We have some things that we need to do to move forward, and I think we can't. Now, several years ago, one of the issues that came up, actually came up with some of our students, and during their summer camping experience, Mr. Medancy came to me and he said, you know, we need to do something. You know, and we started doing some small things, and then we did more things. And largely through Mr. Medancy's intervention, we brought in a couple of gentlemen, one white, one black, one from the area, one, a preacher, from, a pastor, from, from New York. And they started working with our students. That was about three years ago. Steve? Coming in and talking about diversity and talking about awareness of culture and race and doing it with elementary school students and middle school students and working with students over time. Now, you know, our resources are such that we're stretched pretty thinly at times. And so there was a certain amount that we could do, and we kept at it, we kept pecking at it, we kept pecking at it. And then about a year and a half ago, two, two years ago, we had this incident with this young man from our high school where he spewed out some horrendous stuff. That was, that was horrifying, quite frankly. It was horrifying to, to lots of us. And, and, and we needed to do more. Now, I'll tell you honestly, since the time that I talked about and growing up during, during that era in the 60s, I am, I'm, I've become somewhat discouraged and disappointed because I think we would have come further by now.
Yeah.
Right? I think, I would think that we would have come further by now. And we haven't. And I, I find that unfortunate. Now, as a district, we're taking some steps. And I'm going to talk about those in a minute, similar to what Mr. Brown talked about. But each of us individually can also do something. And if anyone is listening, I realized we had, you know, 50 some odd members involved in the meeting, and now we're down to, now we're down to 22. But if, if anyone sees the video, and we will have this video put up, one of the things I would suggest to people is something you can do on your own is you can vote. You can always vote. And we need to have people like members of this board and other people elected who are going to do the right thing, and they're going to do the right thing for everyone, regardless of the color of their skin, their race, their ethnicity. We did put together the Coalition for Social Justice as a response to what we saw occur in this community. And, you know, isn't all our students now? We just had dozens and dozens of students here who would never think of doing anything like. We put that together because we, we believed that we needed to do something, but the way to do it is not a knee-jerk reaction. It's not an assembly. Assemblies are great. It's not a one-time show. And I'm being redundant right now because I'm actually going to say this in a minute as well. We needed to put together a systemic approach to dealing with the issues that we faced. And I think we've been able to do that to a certain extent, or at least the beginnings, the beginnings of that. So I, I did receive, I want to say somewhere in the range of six, eight emails recently, you know, within the last two and a half weeks, the last three weeks. Unfortunately, the vast majority of those emails were just a form letter that was tacked on, and that was someone was sending. Now, I've been doing this for 40 some odd years, and I've been involved with our state association and legislative committee for many years, and have been involved in many initiatives trying to change policy, trying to change some of the statutes. And you always have groups that are saying, well, take this letter and use it. Form letters just become white noise. It's like in the old Peanuts comic strip, where it just becomes wah, 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 wah. It's not about writing a form letter. It's about responding personally, emotionally, to a situation. Steve, our partners in the coalition helped put together the statement that came from the coalition. The statement that came from Mark Shoda and I for our community, our one community, was influenced by Steve's thoughts, by the thoughts of Ingrid Kennedy, who works for the State Education Resource Center, and as you know, facilitates the work of the coalition, and myself. And we put that together in the, in an effort to try to explain how we thought, how we felt, emotional response. So I did, I did prepare something because it's not enough. What we're doing right now is not enough. Is it ever going to be enough? I don't know. I honestly don't know. Right? 52 years later, 52 years after Martin Luther King was assassinated, 52 years, and we're still where we were. And I have a hard time coming to grips with why that is. I really do. So I apologize, Mrs. Carmody. I understand I'm taking, I'm taking a long time. But honestly, I've devoted my entire career here, my entire 40 some odd years of my career to trying to do, not trying to do, doing the right thing for kids. And right now, as a society, we need to do the right thing for our kids. I don't want my grandchildren, 52 years from now, to say, what have we done? That we've done nothing? I don't want my grandchildren, or your grandchildren, or anyone's grandchildren, or children, growing up in a world where people hate one another and are as divided as they are right now. And in this commu, well, we can only do what we can do in our community. So we're going to stay in our lane. We're going to work as hard as we can. Individually, we're all going to vote our conscience, and we're going to try to get people in, in, in positions where they can make some changes. So that being said, I'm, I'm going to take a little liberty now, and I am going to read what I prepared because I actually thought I did a fairly decent job preparing it, so, so I'm not going to waste it. So, and this is kind of in response to the emails that I received. I, I really couldn't return every single one. For those of you who have any idea what's been going on since the, the pandemic hit, we've been working ridiculous hours. It's so much harder to do it this way than it is in person. Steve works ridiculous hours. I was a little worried about him last week, actually, because of the amount of time that he was putting in, trying to, trying to get us where we needed to be. We're all, we're all doing that, teachers, administrators, staff members, while working a ridiculous amount of time, and it's, you know, and it's taking its toll. But nonetheless, I couldn't respond to all of those folks individually. I did a couple. So this is kind of my response, if you will. And if any of those folks are listening in now, I'm going to try to reach back out to them. And I am going to use the document produced by the coalition, Mr. Brown, because I think it's an excellent document. This kind of echoes a little bit of what Mr. Brown said. And so, Mrs. Carmody, I promise this will be the last thing.
Please take your time.
Okay, "Since the incident that resulted in the death of George Floyd, we have all witnessed an upwelling of emotion that highlighted the frustration and fears and sense of injustice that many in our communities feel. Mr. Shoda and I issued a joint statement on behalf of our community condemning racism and violence in all forms. The Southington Public Schools Coalition for Social Justice issued a statement this past week and provided resources and context for our work. We have received communications from community members acknowledging some of the actions in which the schools have engaged to address these issues and urging additional actions." "And the emails are just a small fraction of many learning activities focused on diversity and cultural sensitivity that have been provided for Southington Public School students over the past three years. I am sure that many in our community are not aware of this work with students, but it is ongoing. And incidentally, our partners at CREC volunteered to help us with communications around this, and we were just working on that when this pandemic hit." Because we don't have, they have a full department for public relations, the communications, and we have, well, we have Steve and I. "On a larger scale, the district initiated actions to create the systems within the schools that will lead to fundamental changes. If you have not had the opportunity, please take a few minutes to read the statement from the Southington Public Schools Coalition for Social Justice that was sent out to all families, staff members, and Board of Education members this past week. Within the document are links to a variety of resources that the coalition has shared. At the end of the document is a link to an action plan produced by the coalition. Many of the goals and actions are in the initial implementation stages. Professional learning opportunities for staff are key ingredients in this plan. This fall, approximately 80 educators volunteered to become members of school-based equity leadership teams. Eighty of our educators. The intent was and is to develop a system within the district that will be sustainable over time. The intent, excuse me, the elementary cohort engaged in this series of professional learning activities and was on the verge of implementing training in their own schools with their colleagues when the pandemic interfered with those plans. The secondary cohort was scheduled for the same professional learning activities, but of course, those plans were put on hold as well. These initiatives will begin again as soon as school returns to a somewhat normal schedule. Throughout, we have worked collaboratively with our partners at the State Education Resource Center and the Capital Region Education Council. I thank them both for their efforts. Both of those organizations have been tremendous partners and tremendous supporters. The collective members that comprise the coalition have engaged in professional and personal learning opportunities together for the past year and one half. The intent all along has been to build systemically to ensure sustainable actions and change. Systemically to build sustainable actions and change. One-shot workshops or presentations or assemblies might sound great on the surface, but to produce real change, the infrastructure must be in place that supports that change. That does not happen instantaneously, but rather with diligence and actions that are intentional. It grows over time. The members of the coalition believe that the result of our collective actions will be systemic in nature and will promote real and long-lasting change. Our actions will speak louder than words. And for people who are interested, please feel free to reach out to any member of the coalition, and there, there's a link listing them in that document, for additional information or dialogue. So, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to say that. I, I appreciate the time.
Uh, first of all, extremely well-written and said. You will be publishing this and sending it somewhere, Mr. Canel?
I, well, first of all, I will send it to Mrs. Blanchard, who just asked me for it. I saw the note, Mrs. Blanchard, so it will be, it will be part of the minutes. And then, yes, I will put that out as well.
Okay, very well done. Thank you very much. Certainly said the things that need to be said for what is happening right now. Thank you. Continuing with yours, report, Canel from the administration.
We do have two other things. I, you know, Mr. Medancy, do you, would you, I know I'm putting you on the spot. You've done a tremendous amount of work here. Steve has been an amazing, amazing, amazing force behind the work of the coalition, in addition to everything else that he, he does for us. You know, I'm going to say this, districts our size generally have two, sometimes three assistant superintendent. And Mr. Medancy has, has literally done the work of two or, two or three people from the first day that he stepped into this role. And I know that probably embarrasses him having me say that, but I'm, I said it, so it's too late. At any rate, I do, I would like, Steve, if you, if you want to say anything, if you want to add to that, I'd, I'd like you to have the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Tim. I, I'll be brief. I don't want to say much because I do agree with you, the actions speak louder than words. So I, I want to leave it there. But I do want to say one thing. When I was speaking with Ingrid earlier this week, she and I have been very close over time, and are very friendly and, and, you know, certainly supporting her right now as she goes through this too. You know, a mother of a black man, and who has a black grandchild, who's really dealing with a lot herself right now. So I want to send our thoughts to her right now because she's been so supportive of the district, and I just want everyone to realize that she's, she's a real partner, and CERC has been wonderful in supporting us. But with that being said, the, the one thing that I, I just want to encourage everyone who may be tuning in, the one thing I'm fearful of that I said to Ingrid is, a lot of times, emotion creates energy. But when emotion subsides, energy subsides. And I just pray and hope that we all maintain our energy around this issue, so that we can really, like you said, have, have lasting impact and change occur. And not just the initial changes that are underway, because there is so much work to do, that it is going to take a lasting amount of energy to do it. And so I just am thankful for the coalition, very honest, Tim. Thank, I appreciate you giving me credit. But the coalition, even with that statement, was huge in helping me just bring an initial thought to something that was fruitful and beneficial to the community to have in their hands. So thank you to our coalition members for helping.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. All right, this seems a little mundane, but I'm going to hit with a, a couple of quick points. First of all, our, our real final day for students, the 180th day per our Commissioner of Education is what we needed to do. That, that's really Monday, the 15th. I know we have some schools doing some fun things for kids on 15th, some fun things, fun things on the 16th. But our, our real 180th day is the 15th. Now, on June 16th, we're actually doing something that's fun. We're going to have a motorcade, right? Not parade. We're doing a motorcade, Mr. Messina, a motorcade, presidential in nature. And that's going to be, yeah, I, I've got to tell you, this was no small feat to actually get this. And I have to thank our town manager, Mark Shoda, is just a fabulous partner. I enjoy thoroughly working with Mark. And as you know, Mark comes from a family of educators. He gets it. And Mark loves this community, graduated from Southington High School. I won't say when, because he wouldn't be happy with me if I did. But he, he also, I understand, got a B in Mrs. Carmody's class one time, and he still has.
He still blames me for that, yes.
Right. He still blames you. I understand that. At any rate, through his efforts and through the good graces of our police chief, Jack Daly, and our, and our health director, Shane Lockwood, we are going to have a motorcade for our seniors. I view it as part of our commencement exercise. I view it as part of our commencement exercises, step one, if you will. So Tuesday. The, uh, the high school administration is. Amazing, really. It's an amazing team. If we have something that needs to happen logistically, we just say, guys, this needs to happen and they work it out. So they've worked out. A, uh, a schedule, really. For families to arrive in waves and you you saw the communication that I put out there and if you have not seen any of Mr. Pepe's PSAs. Mr. Brown, this actually answers your your question. They're they're blasts that go out to students and parents. So if you go on the Southington High School webpage, you will see Pepe's PSAs. PSA standing for Public Service Announcements. And, uh, they're good and they're actually quite humorous at times.
Highly recommended.
Highly highly recommended. Yes, correct. Um. So that went out to, uh, to parents and students, complete with color coding. Overhead picture of the of the parking lot, students and 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 families. So family members going to, will be driving a vehicle. It'll be a parent, an adult family member. No students are driving. Students are going to be. Passenger seat where they can wave out the window. They can talk with people. They're going to be arriving starting, uh, six o'clock or so and it's by, it's by letter. Of course, it's alphabetical. We do everything alphabetically in school. By the way, I advocated that anyone started like with Z should go first. But I don't know if anyone listened to me. Instead of the As going first, I think the Zs should go first. Nonetheless. Uh, so so families will arrive. So it's a it's a staggered arrival time off the Flanders Street. Uh, through the Flanders Street entrance, come in faculty members are actually going to be. On the sidewalk from Flanders Street all the way around to Pleasant Street and believe it or not, Mr. Pepe actually stepped off. The distance and so that we know we have an ample amount of space for faculty members to be there and be physically distant. So they can greet students as they arrive. Uh, families will go in back into the parking spaces and that will continue. Uh, until the we're all filled up with all of our families and somewhere in the neighborhood of seven o'clock or so. Uh, we will embark on our sojourn. And vehicles will exit on the through the Pleasant Street. Exit, turn right on Pleasant Street. Proceed down, of course, DePaulo is there and some students attended DePaulo. At the very end will be Kennedy and some students attended Kennedy. So there's a nice symmetry there. Turn, so turning right or west on Hobart Street, if you will, follow Hobart Street to. Main Street. Uh, right where the municipal center is. And I suggested earlier for board members, that would be a fabulous place for board members to gather. You can park right there, get there early as if it were the Apple Harvest Parade. Put the chairs out. On that, on that stretch. Uh, and then it will, the motorcade will proceed down Main Street. Continue through the center of town. I understand there are, um. Uh, members of our town council are going to be out there in the center of town. We're we're encouraging businesses and people to come out. And proceed all the way down through Plantsville Center, all the way down, uh, past Kennedy Middle School. And the very end of the motorcade will be. At that intersection and there will be multiple ways for folks to disperse. You can get on the highway and come back. You can turn left, go past AquaTurf. Go straight, go to Merritt and Waterbury Turnpike. But we anticipate that it will be a wonderful, a wonderful time and that will be Tuesday. The approximate time that the motorcade will depart the high school is seven o'clock. I I I think we'll probably be pretty close to that. Um, I will say that we're going to try to get Mr. Pepe back. And, um, we're working out, we have a plan A, B, and C. For transporting Mr. Pepe. I did volunteer to drive him. He'll be a little incapacitated. That's okay. We'll, we'll take care of him and, um. I see Mr. Senza shaking her head. Yeah, I know. It's going to be, it's going to be interesting for him, but.
He still may be in a lot of homes.
I, he may be. However, Mrs. Pepe will deliver him and knowing Mr. Pepe, he will want to be there to greet all the students as they arrive, right, Mr. Messina? I'm sure Mr. Pepe will be. Correct. So we have some plans. We have, we have, uh, A, B, and C, as I said, a contingency plans. And, uh, I will be driving the vehicle for Mr. Pepe. And, uh, I think we're going to call it Pepe's Palanquin. So for those of you who know what a Palanquin is. And, uh, we have our SRO. Uh, who will be riding. Uh, in the front seat with me and he will coordinate because our police department will be blocking off the intersections. As they, as they typically do for things of that nature. So it's pretty well. Coordinated and I am really, really, really pleased and thankful that. We had a partnership with the town. As I said, I can't say enough good things about Mr. Shoda. Uh, Jack Daly, our our Police Chief, Shane Lockwood, our our Health Director, we're, it's the, it's, it's the opportunity to do something. For our students. They certainly deserve that this community comes together and I think it will be a really positive. Thing for our community to do and support our our graduating seniors. So that was a long explanation about the motorcade, but it saved me putting an email together.
Yes, Mr. Darren Alaskine.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I took a moment and I checked the long-range forecast and, uh, it looks like it's going to be seventy-eight degrees and sunshine.
All right.
Fantastic. We don't have to worry about.
As it, as it should be. Okay, so.
If you can believe, if you can believe the weather forecast.
Yeah, that's true.
Hey.
This, you can rain, you cannot rain on this parade. Okay.
So, yes.
Oh, you just took my words.
The one thing, the one thing I can guarantee you is that it will not be a snow day.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. I'm so glad we're doing that for the kids. I I'm thrilled about that. Um, that ends your report, right, Mr. Canelon, I think?
Yes, and I'm, I'm sorry that was so lengthy, Mrs. Carmody.
Needed to say what you said and you said it very well, as you always do. And so thank you. Um, I'm going to move on to the personnel report. If I could have a motion, please.
Uh, Student Rep, uh, Mrs. Carmody.
Oh, we have Mr. Messina. Mr. Messina.
My goodness, how could I forget my kids?
Forget.
I don't.
Whoops.
Um. Trevor, do you want to begin? I think I saw Brett and all of them are.
I actually, I think, uh, Amrit is starting and then Brett is going.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead.
All right, so to start off, um, Mr. We talked to Mr. Pepe yesterday and he wished his best. Um, we already discussed how he's going to try his best to be at the motorcade on Tuesday. Um, also, usually this is a meeting where we would tell, like the meeting of all excellence. And we'd have the new board member for the new student rep here today, but due to Corona and like. It got pushed back for us and like school, everything was very hectic, so. We pushed that back as well, so hopefully we'll have them ready for the next meeting. Interviews will be going through soon. And we have applications and the whole process is underway. Um, also, I wanted to thank Trevor for like picking me last year and like just thank him. For all that he's done because he's been such a great support for us this year, like, like especially for like. With Corona and all this other stuff, I'm just really glad that he was our senior this year and I can't wait to, um, put, show what he's taught us. And have that on display for next year and for the new, for the new generations of the student reps to come. And yeah, that concludes my thing.
Yeah, I cannot fully, more fully agree with Amrit on that. Trevor, thank you so much. You really have been the best. You guided us through this whole situation. You've helped us. And we really appreciate it. We wish you the best at UConn and for the future and hopefully you'll come see us soon. We would appreciate that. You have to come and visit, so.
One hundred percent.
So it's almost the end of school. We already talked about that, but I would just put it out there, no finals this year. So final assignments are being turned in. I think as of tonight, all the final assignments have been turned in and we look forward to the graduation in August.
Um, and then I have two things. One, I did want to touch on one of the, uh, previous conversations that we were having about the current climate of. The world in general. Um, and I know that a lot of what was mentioned, uh, had to do with. Uh, the youth, uh, currently and I think. I I can speak to that in the sense where we have realized the world that we're living in. And the climate that we're living in. And I think that. My generation is. What I hope to be a generation of change. And I think that we realize that. Um, our future, um, is determined by what we do today. And that our actions do speak louder than words and that we are. Right now, not fighting for the rights of people, but we're fighting for the respect of people. And respect is a lot harder to gain than, uh, rights because you can write all the laws you want. But it's a lot harder to change people's minds.
You're right.
And I think that that is one of the biggest challenges that we're facing compared to fifty-two years ago. And I think that. This, I, I hope that this generation. Is that change and I hope that this generation, um, raises more generations to be the change, the good change in the world. Um. So that was my two cents on that, um, issue. And so, yeah, um, moving to a slightly lighter subject. Um. As Mr. Canelon mentioned, um, we are having the Senior Motorcade on Tuesday. Which I had heard about this like prior to Mr. Pepe's PSA. And I thought it was just going to be like the whole like saying goodbye to your future thing. And then after watching Mr. Pepe's PSA, I was sitting with my mom on the back deck of our porch and we, our jaws dropped. We were, I, I was so happy. My mom was just like, it's like. I, she was like, I haven't seen a smile on his face this big in weeks because, yeah, and so. It was, it was just such a wonderful, wonderful surprise and, um. Of course, you know, on behalf of my class, we want to thank, uh, the town manager, the Chief of Police, the Health Director, um, the Board, um. Mr. Canelon in particular, thank you so much for all the work that you've done to put into this. Um, we really do appreciate it. Um, you know, I've said this time and time again. We have worked thirteen-plus years to have the best three months of those years taken away and. It's, it's been hard to process that, but. With the work that everybody has done in the community to try and honor us, we really do appreciate it and, um. We are excited, um, for what our future holds and we thank you, um, all of you so much for doing what you've done for our class. So, thank you.
Enjoy that night, Trevor.
Thank you.
Waving out that window and we'll be looking for you, okay?
One hundred percent.
Thank you so much. Um, and thank you Brett and Amrit for being such, you kids have, um. You know, really added a lot as as our student reps always had and you're there. Stay at meetings when there are topics that we need your input and it's very important. So our sincere thanks to all three of you. So continuing, now I think I can go on to the personnel report with, um, a motion. Someone?
Yeah, move to approve the personnel report as submitted.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposition, correct?
Correct.
Excuse me, old business, town government communication? I'm sorry, did I miss something?
You also, you also missed.
I'm sorry, I'm not catching, I I'm on to, uh. Town Government Communication, correct?
Yes, yes.
Tim, did you have something you wanted to say or?
I do. I do. I was, uh, I participated and I almost said I attended. I participated in the, uh, Board of Finance. Meeting on Wednesday. And, uh, as you know, we had a request before the Board of Finance to reestablish or to establish the non-lapsing account. Uh, per state statute in the, in the amount of, you know, not to exceed two percent of the. Total Board of Education operating budget from the preceding year, which is twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And the Board of Finance agreed, uh, to do that wholeheartedly. And I, I want to publicly thank the members of the Board of Finance, A, for their support. B, for all of the compliments. Literally from every single member of the Board of Finance about the efforts of our staff. On our administration and the compliments for the Board of Ed, to toward the Board of Education. Uh, for all the work that has. Been required and that everyone has put in during during this public health emergency. It was a, it was a, it was a good meeting and it was a very, very, it was very, very nice. All of the. All the really positive comments were were heartwarming, quite frankly. I I feel like we have. Continued a really good relationship. Uh, we've established a very firm. Relationship based on, based on trust. We had a good discussion about. Uh, how those funds might be used to benefit this community moving, moving forward. And I did express. O- of course, my concern about. The costs that we do not know about yet. Regarding the reopening of school. What are we going to be required to do? So last year, as you might recall. We brought to you, we, meaning the administrative, uh, leadership team. Brought to you, brought to the Board, recommendations for the use of those funds in the non-lapsing account. And by and large, those were. Uh, projects that needed to be done around, uh, facility-related issues. Yes, we finally bought the curtain for the auditorium. And everyone is.
Congratulations.
Giving me a hard time about that, but I have been dying to have that happen for the last six years. Because it was only, I mean.
Good, I can't wait.
I mean, it was only from nineteen eighty-nine, right?
I know.
Anyway. We did, we, you know, I always say, we have a responsibility. To this community to maintain the facilities. These facilities are resources that the, that the community entrusts to our care, to your care. And, and so it's important to do that. And so we focused using the funds on those. So my, my caution this year was that. We'll bring a list of things because we have. Quite a few things that need to be done over, haven't been done over time that we know need to, need to occur in the buildings, but. Uh, my recommendation to the Board is that we, we have the list, but we put all of that on hold. And we put all of that on hold because we do not know what is going to be required of us. To open schools. And as I've said on, on numerous occasions, look at the, the rules that were given to us to open up. Uh, in-person summer school, if you will. They, they were just untenable and from an implementation point of view, almost impossible to implement. And from a cost point of view. An extremely high cost. So if any of that trickles over to opening schools in the fall. It, it's going to be a problem for us and I think some of those funds. Should be used for that purpose. Call them COVID nineteen funds, call it whatever, call it whatever you want. And I believe all of the members of the Board of Finance agreed with that. Uh, because technically, you know, we don't necessarily want to use those funds for what we deem operating. Expenses, but yet we might have operating expenses. What if, what if we do have to hire a monitor for every bus? First of all, we're not going to find them. But what if we do according to the state? What if we have to have additional staff? What if we have to have additional nursing staff? What if we have to have additional custodians? None of those were budgeted because we didn't know any of this was going to happen. So my caveat was. The funds can go into the non-lapsing account and two percent of our budget is going to be a little bit north of one point nine million dollars. So we have that as unexpendited funds because we have savings. Uh. I, I believe we're, we're going to continue, continue to engage the Board of Finance in a dialogue. Uh, about that and and they'll be very receptive. I, I just was very impressed with. The dialogue at the, at the meeting and as I shared with all of you via an email. That was approved unanimously by the Board of Finance, but what you probably didn't know was all of the compliments. That were directed toward all the efforts of the Board of Education, the administration and, and, and of course, all of our, all of our teachers and staff. I wanted to say that publicly and I wanted to thank the Board of Finance members and I especially want to thank Mark Shoda, our town manager, because Mark is. I I continue to say this, but Mark is a, is a wonderful partner. And he and I work so well together. We really have that belief that we are, we are one community. It's not town Board of Education. This is one community. And we are all trying to pull the oars in the same direction, as they say. If you want to know what that means, read the book, The Boys in the Boat. Okay, Mr. Ashana. That's your, that's your assignment, Mr. Ashana. The Boys in the Boat is. The Boys in the Boat is the book to read.
You know what, that's so great to hear though, that the, the Board of Finance complimented all the things that have been going on. We really have come together as a community and we should be very proud of all that has been happening. I, I, I'm very proud of everything. So thank you for sharing that. Um, next we have, um, a distance learning update, I think is, uh, Steve, are you still there?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Medanci, yes.
So I, you know, from two weeks ago, obviously not, a lot has changed. We, we continue to remain in the situation we are. But, but I do have to take this opportunity, this being kind of our final board meeting while school is still in session, to publicly acknowledge our teachers, our administrators, our secretarial custodial maintenance staff, nurses, food service, truly everyone, I hope I didn't miss any group because it's not technology staff, uh, were absolutely heroic effort these final three months in, in doing everything they possibly could uh for our students. Um, it's been, I've said it to them in writing and when I can in words, it's almost been, it's been inspiring in many ways to watch them. You know, people can say, well, Steve's working hard, everyone's working hard. Um, it, it's been, it's, it's truly been an awesome effort on everyone's part and, and I'm so appreciative for all of them. Um, you know, we hope things look normal in, in the fall, but we won't know that for a little while yet. Uh, our hope is that the state doesn't rush uh to, to push out any requirements um or information and that they use the time and the information they gather to come up with uh realistic and feasible expectations for what our return looks like. And, and lastly, um, just, I, I want to say right now, I'll thank Tim. You know, I mean, I'm not saying that because he's my boss and we're sitting in this meeting. But you know, when all this goes down, there's one person, everybody looks to it and says, okay, what do we do now? And what I mean most, and, and I don't mean the, the, the technical expertise, but I mean just the calmness and the steadiness that you need in leadership during a time of crisis. And he provided that um to me, to our central office staff, to our administrative staff, to our teaching staff, and right down through uh to all personnel. So I just think nobody ever takes a moment to, to acknowledge that guy because usually he's the one passing out the accolades. So I just want to do that publicly tonight.
Uh, well, you know, Mr. Medanci, he's also done a lot to help the chairman of the Board of Education, who needs a lot of help sometimes, you know, right? Thank you. And you know, Steve, I also, when you talk about distance learning and, and where's Bob? Bob is up there. Bob, when you think about our curriculum meeting the other day with the teachers, and you know, you're gonna get into that in a minute, but all that they're doing even for next year, you know, not knowing what it's going to be, Steve, and how they're already planning what distance learning can look like for next year. Done a wonderful job, wonderful, wonderful job. But I'm gonna turn this now over to Mr. Brown, which we have for the science curriculum.
Yep, I, I first, I may just echo what you said.
The rest of them are all yours.
Yeah, I just wanted to object for one minute. So these are second reads of units actually that were inadvertently left off of the last agenda. We actually already reported out on these units two meetings ago. So these are just motions to approve. The next board meeting, we will share the minutes um from the meeting that we just had the other day. Um, and which myself, yourself, and Misty attended. And those units will be put on the agenda for a first read at the next meeting.
Yeah. So you just need motions for these, right, Steve?
That's it, yeah.
That's it. Go ahead, Steve, Bob, go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve the science curriculum unit for grades three, four, eight, earth science and biology as recommended by the curriculum instruction committee.
Second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, go ahead, Bob.
I move to approve the ELA K two phonics units of study as recommended by the curriculum instruction committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, go ahead, Bob.
Move to approve the Suddington High School mush curriculum. Uh, that actually stands for something. Uh, as recommended by the curriculum instruction committee.
That was good, Bob.
That's, that's.
Can I get a second on that?
Modern U.S. history.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We, we couldn't come up with a better acronym for that?
Modern U.S. history.
One, one, one that Bob would remember.
Let me just tell you, we just talked about a course yesterday, the abbreviation CIA. So we got more coming. Anyway, I move to approve the SHS introduction to piano, ukulele, and guitar curriculum as recommended by the curriculum instruction committee.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't forget that you're supposed to learn how to play the ukulele, okay?
Have to mention, did take that class this year and it was a very fun class. I highly recommend it.
It's gonna be fun, the kids are gonna love it, Trevor.
So much.
Amazing.
Trev- Trevor, we don't have the budget for everyone.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, moving on, um, the athletic is the body setting. As I guess, Mr. Ma- uh, Mr., what is your name, Canelan?
Yes, yes, Mrs. Carmody.
Yeah, um, we all got the um material, so.
Yes.
We need a motion on that, right, Mr. Canelan? Or do you want to discuss it?
Yes, correct. I mean, I, I can, I can certainly, I think I explained it in my memo. If anyone has any questions about that, it, it did arise out of that civil rights review. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we can finally move forward on this. And this is clearly the first step in doing so.
Okay, so, so Dave Taranowski, your hands up, yes.
Right, you know, I, I read through the uh, all of the proposals and, and they, they cover a wide variety of things, including soil sampling and.
Right.
Uh, to what extent are we looking to do? Are we looking only to focus on what the uh Title IX uh uh complaint was?
So what, what we're, what we're trying, it, it's uh, it's actually yes to, to both because the second question is there's, what, what would impact would that have on the entire facility? So we're trying to address the concerns that were raised. And in order to do that, we need to take a holistic view. Because if you look at the number of activities and sports teams that we have out there, it, it looks like a large area. We are packed so tightly out there all of the time that it, it's the ripple effect. You throw the pebble into the pond and the ripples spread out everywhere. If we are going to do one thing in one area, such as the softball field, which is, which is a major focus, it's going to have a ripple effect. And so therefore, we need to take a holistic view at the facility in general and have uh a, a plan, if you will. If we do X, how is that gonna affect Y? And, and what will we need to do over time to that facility? So the, the way to approach that, instead of trying to look at it in, you know, just these, this one step here, one step there, one step there, is to look at it much more holistically so that when we make any moves, we know move A is going to have effect B and C and do that in a planned fashion so that we're not surprised. And then we have uh a result somewhere else on the facility that's gonna have a negative impact on, on what we're trying to do for our student athletes.
I just find it difficult to comprehend the need to do soil sampling when it has nothing to do with equal opportunity for, you know, under Title IX.
Well, some of that, the, there's a lot in there that's would be after the fact. The basics in each one are the, I think the lowest was uh twenty-three thousand dollars. The next one was around twenty-nine and the next one was thirty-one. All of those, none of those uh basic costs involve the soil sampling. All of that stuff would be after the fact. So in other words, the study happens. Did we say, we need to, let's say, we need to move the softball field, right? And what impact does that have on everything in order to build dugouts or do the things that are equivalent to the baseball field? And again, I'm just using that as an example.
Right.
All of that occurs and then in the plan, the plan says, in order to move further, in order to enhance your entire athletic facility, you'll need to do these other things. Well, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that that has to happen now. It might down the road, you know, somewhere down the road, but that would be part of an implementation plan. What we're looking for is a holistic plan that says, here's what you probably need to do in order to improve the facility for softball. And here's what that's gonna, here's the impact that's gonna have on the rest of your facility. That's the, that's the, that's the nature of the study to move us forward. There are going to be things that we have to do after the fact. And in fact, there is money in the capital improvement budget that Mr. Shoda put in on his side. We know we're gonna have to do some work on that softball field. We know that. And the, and the money is in the capital improvement plan in order to do that. So that's, that's a, that's a different phase. This initial study phase takes in everything. Everything that you see out there has to be in this whole big package if we want to do it the right way. If, if otherwise, you're really risking that whole pebble effect. If you just move one thing and you don't take into account what effect that might have on everything else, I think that's gonna be a problem down the road.
Well, it looks as if, you know, based on the information that was sent to us, there are three uh proposals.
Yeah.
Is that, it just, these are proposals that were sent to us.
Yeah, there were three, three quotes, three proposals. And as you can see, there are various levels of complexity. One of them was much more complex. They didn't need to send us all that, but they did.
Well, you know, I'm not in favor of spending money just for the sake of spending it. You know, I would like to spend money to satisfy the needs that we have. And, and I know you're looking at, so the, a holistic approach to cover everything we can. Uh, but I'm looking out for the dollars. And to spend money for something which I don't believe is really necessary, I don't think is necessary.
Okay, I, I respect that. I'm gonna respectfully disagree though, because I think if you do something and you only look at one small part of it, you don't actually know if you're compromising yourself down the road and putting yourself in a situation where you're gonna have to spend more money later on to correct your mistakes. That's, that's the problem with not having a comprehensive plan. I think it needs to be done, I think it needs to be done within the scope of a comprehensive plan. Otherwise, you, you risk, you, you run the risk of doing something that you're gonna regret later on because it's gonna impact something else that you want.
Well, if I was to bid on this project, you know, just as hypothetically, if I was to put together a, a proposal that covered everything under the sun, that ran up a very high number, I would be basically selected because I cover everything?
I don't think that, I don't think that's what I said. I think what I said is you need a comprehensive plan. These folks put in a proposal that breaks, well, one of, they were asked to break down just the softball field. Just looking at the softball field, what do you need, what do you need to do to that? And then what would you need to do to provide a plan that would give us the softball field within the context of everything else that we have out there?
And then the bottom line is, what are we looking to spend?
Pardon me?
What are we looking to spend?
No more than thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
That, that's what was, that's what the, that's what the propos, that's what the budget proposal was in the twenty twenty-one budget. And what we did was we removed the money from the twenty twenty-one budget and opted to put that into the unexpended, fund that out of the unexpended dollars from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget.
So I understand that part. But like I said, I spent some time reading through the detail of all three proposals. Uh, you know, anywhere from eleven pages of a proposal to, I think it's thirty-five on one, thirty-seven on another. Uh, details, I will give them, well put together. Uh, but some of the things that they included in their scope of what they're looking to provide, I don't know if that's necessary. I, I know you're gonna probably disagree on that. But I know we had the Title IX issue to deal with. And um, I mean, to me, that should be the focus.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you. Uh, uh, let's continue the discussion, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I have a question, um, to kind of dovetail on what Dave said. Once the study is done, can we pick parts of it and do it over a period of time? Say, do the Title IX and then not do other stuff? Or is it, once we do the study, are we stuck doing the whole thing at the same time?
No, not, not at all. And in fact, having the study allows you to lay that out over time.
Okay.
Which, which I think is, which I think is very appropriate. This is not a, this is not a problem that emerged it, you know, over one or two years. What, what happened, quite frankly, is that through no fault of anyone, we accepted donations, et cetera. For example, one of the things that was cited in the civil rights study is, are the dugouts. There are dugouts on the baseball field, not on the softball field. Now, I have children who played both baseball and softball, right? The dugouts on the baseball field, I will tell you, and, and you probably know this, Mr. Brown, from having worked there, came from where? The Diamond Club.
The Diamond Club.
They weren't funded in the Board of Education operating budget. They were donations. So the Diamond Club funded that. So did the Booster Club for the softball team fund dugouts? You know, or raise money for dugouts? They, they may have wanted to. I don't know if that location was tight enough, you know, was, was far enough out from the fence to, to allow that. That, that's part of what we're looking at. The American Legion donated the lighting on the baseball field. The American Legion, as you know, uses the field, which is wonderful. Okay? Is there lighting on the girls' softball field right now? No. So when the state came in, they said, have you looked at these two facilities side by side? Because looking at them, there are glaring discrepancies. So it, it wasn't anything that anyone did out of mal-intent, but Diamond Club was very aggressive. They even still the batting cages. I mean, even in my first year here, I'm looking at these batting cages that were put up. I said, how are we doing that and we're not doing it over here? So that's a problem for us as a, as a community. Because once you accept it, once you accept those donations, they become yours. So regardless of how benign that may have been and how well-intentioned that may have been, it created this imbalance that we now have to address and rectify. And having had children who played, as I said, both baseball and softball, I, there is a huge imbalance there in the facilities themselves. Not in what we do. We have great coaching, we provide opportunities for kids, we do all of that, we support them. But in the facilities themselves, and that was, that was the focus of the review. Now, as I, as I said it in answer to your question, if you have a comprehensive plan, the very first thing in our plan, the very first thing that comes out of that plan has got to be the issue of the, of the softball field. Regardless of what those recommendations are. If it's move the field out a little bit so that you can build the dugouts, plan down the road and maybe you do a public-private partnership for lights on the field, or maybe you don't. I don't know. That plan can help steer you and it can guide us in terms of requests to the town as well. And if you, if you don't do it in a, in a holistic way, you're only gonna do one piece and you're not gonna see the other. And I think that's, that's been part of the problem here. And I'm, I'm gonna be, I've been frank about it before. You know, look, I've lived there for forty years, all three of my children, all three of my children went through the public schools here. I love, I love this community. But I've got to tell you, sometimes in this community, we've been penny wise and pound foolish. There was no plan, there was no plan to look at the roofs of all of our structures. Until several years, several years ago, I said, Peter, refer, referencing Mr. Romano, these are big dollar items. Where's our plan? So we put together a review of all of the roofs, the age of them, whether there were warranty, when it was gonna run out, et cetera, et cetera. We now have all of our buildings, by our, I mean, public, under, under the public school umbrella, all in a plan which we have provided. all in a plan which we have provided to the town side, you know, the municipal government side of it, so that nobody is surprised. We knew that the high school roof needed to happen. Right? We know that the next phase of the high school roof needs to happen. We know what all the roofs are. Those are big dollar items. If you don't do that for the facility at the high school, you're being penny wise and pound foolish. And the only way to do it is to have a plan. Now, that's not something Peter Romano can do. Peter and his group did the roofs. The facilities themselves, you need someone with the expertise to actually do that for you and put the plan in place. And then through dialogue with the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, the Town Council and the community stakeholders, you say, all right, this is part of the plan that we need to do here. We need to do the softball field first, so we need to do this here. So we're gonna need to appropriate some funds for that. Later on down the road, we're gonna need to do X, we're gonna need to do Y, we're gonna need to do Z. To not do it that way, in my opinion, is penny wise and pound foolish. And I think it, it, it's gonna hurt us in the long run, just like not having a plan for the roofs. Because we didn't. This last roof that we did at the high school, it was leaking like crazy. There was no plan for it. And finally, we said, hey, it's leaking. And they said, why didn't anyone tell us? Well, you know what? Peter's plan was in place and it had been in place with the previous town manager. He just never passed that on to the powers that be. So we had to go down there and explain all of that. And now we have a plan in place. Everybody knows that those roofs have to happen over, over a period of time. We need to do the same thing with the, with the, with the facility plan at the high school. Yeah, the civil rights piece was the softball field, but the softball field is one piece of it. You do something with the softball field, it's gonna affect everything else that we have out there because we're tightly packed in. For the amount of programs that we have. I mean, Mr. Rister is on, I, I see him here. He can tell you how many programs we have. For the amount of programs we have, we are packed in like sardines. Those fields are used constantly because of all the programs that we're offering for kids. And that's, that's a good thing that we're offering all those programs for kids. But for a high school our size with the number of programs that we have, it would be great if we had twice as much space as we have out there, but we don't. So what we have, we have to use wisely and we have to have a really comprehensive plan that's gonna help us make sure we have the improvements in order to do that. Sorry, that's my soapbox.
Uh, I, Joe, wish your hand up?
Yeah, I, so, Tim, thank you.
Fine.
So I, I had a chance to review it as well and you partially answered my question about, um, you know, trying to, again, how we keep saying that we managed to do a lot of things in-house with Mr. Romano and his team. Um, now, I, I guess my question is for you and, and Mr. Rister. Um, so especially in an attempt to try and be compliant with the, uh, with the Title IX thing, uh, so are there changes that would be made to the softball field that would affect spacing? Um, and, and again, that's not something that we could necessarily do on our own as far as, I, I understand where David's coming from as far as the $30,000. I mean, that could be utilized for surveying, um, trying to work on that one particular thing. Is all that included in that price of the $30,000 as far as are, are we actually surveying the fields and everything else? Because again, like, when it, when it comes to it, you know, them going through and saying, well, you need this, you need that, you need this. I, I, I think spending $30,000 on that is, is not the best way to appropriate the money, especially given everything else that's going on right now. But, but if, if it's including sort of like the actual preparation of, you know, this is where your current line sets are, um, you know, this is how much room you have between the softball field and the, um, and our track with the football stadium and everything else. You know, I, I, I see value in that. But if it's, if it's not gonna reflect that, then, uh, I, I don't know if $30,000 would buy dugouts.
So Mr. Mr. Rister actually has quite a bit of experience in this in his previous district in Windsor. And I'm gonna, uh, my short answer to that is, yes, that's why we're doing it.
Right.
In order to do that. But I'm gonna defer to, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Rister. And Steve, if you don't mind, if you can talk based on your experience with what you did in, what you did in Windsor, what you, what you needed in order to be able to do that.
Sure. Uh, yes, and good questions, Joe and Dave and, and Bob. I, I would say that a, a lot of this is really, um, in terms of long-term capital planning. Um, to your, there will be some work done like you're suggesting, Joe. But, uh, essentially, this is to put something in a capital plan. So over the, for example, let me give you an idea. I've only been here six months. But when, when the turf field facility was put in in 2012, we really haven't made any improvements. Again, no fault of anyone, but we haven't made any improvements to our surrounding facilities since then. Now, softball has to be the first thing we address because of the ORC, uh, uh, investigation or inquiry. But, uh, yes, there'll be, but $30,000, um, for what you're talking about, Joe, I mean, some of that stuff comes in like Phase Two, if you don't mind me using the Phase word. We all hear a lot about it, phases now. The first phase is really to say, okay, what are we gonna, what are we, we're gonna look at softball. And then we're also gonna look at everything else on the campus while we're there. Because to just do a study on softball, um, without studying the whole campus, you could have made an argument, the town may be sure the district should have did a, uh, evaluation before we did the turf field. You know, but the turf fields were just got done, like, you know, Tim said, without any planning involved. We just said, we're gonna leave the football field where it is and we're gonna put the turf field down. So, you know, these are pretty much fixed costs right now for $30,000 in that neighborhood. As, as Tim said, there is, there are companies, we have three companies that you've seen on the paper that we've had. There are sports architectural firms. And they really, if you really look at the first four pages, Dave, because a lot of that after that, it's all about references, about what they've done. You know, one of the companies worked on Dunkin' Donuts Park, planning that, planning that out before the construction. But really, if you really look at the first four pages of every proposal, they come in different forms, but they do three things. They evaluate where we are. They assess what should be done. And then they help us build a capital plan for that $30,000 on how we lay things out over the next five to 10 to 15 years. Because to Bob's question, we're not gonna do it all in one day. So we wanna have a plan instead of just patching, like right now, we need our track, which was resurfaced, I think five or six years ago, after the turf field, it was resurfaced. We're having some issues at the start line. So they're gonna tell us everything that we need, you know, what we need to look at. We may be not, we may say no to a lot of it. We may not need to do any, a lot of that soil samples that are in there. Our town has done a lot of that. We can, we don't need all that. But that's what they do. They offer you what services. But most of those are additional services right now. But you have an interesting question, Joe, and I was just talking with some of those firms today. You know, we're really trying to nail down what we get out of that proposal for the $31,000 or the 29 or the 22 or 23. So it's an excellent question. But you're not gonna get a full schemat, a schematic until Phase Two. I guess, and until you take the recommendation of what you're gonna do and hire a company to start construction. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does. And, and again, it's, it's just, um, uh, I, I think if there were any other circumstances, you know, you said the whole phase thing and everything else. Uh, I, uh, you know, that's $30,000 in a, in a time where we, a lot of unknowns. It's just, um, it's just one of those things. But, but again, I, I, being a landscaping mind and everything else and studying the ways that estates used to get built, you know, is essentially, we're gonna plant these line of trees here and they're, these are gonna look great in 60 years. So it's, um, to have, to have that mindset of a capital plan, I agree 100%. It's just more of the, uh, making sure that we get the biggest bang out of that, I, I guess, and then, um,
Right.
You know, if, uh,
I mean, for example, just to do, just to look at the softball field with anything else, you know, to me, it's cost effective when somewhere down the road, you're gonna have, there's other things on campus that are gonna have to be addressed. Anybody that's walked up on, I think the stadium, the stadium, Fontana Stadium bleachers were put in in the early 1970s. So they're gonna need to be done, you know? So, I mean, I think it's, it'll help the town and, and, and I think to, to what, uh, Mr. Canelon was saying, you know, the, the town, we're working real, really well together with them right now. There was an outside study done on all the rest of the facilities years ago in, in the town. And, and so we need to, you know, we, the good news is we don't have to worry about our campus right now. The rest of town, you know, seems to be in pretty good shape. But we're, we haven't done anything, like I said, since 2012.
Okay.
So we gotta put things in the plan to keep us up to date. Or our fields are just gonna continue to, I mean, it's not just the softball field that needs attention. Our other fields need attention too.
Okay, uh, once again, if I may, okay, I see some hands up. Um, Mr. Canelon, I have a question for you before I get to Mrs. Clark, I think. Um, what do you need from the board tonight?
So what?
Proposal or?
Well, what we're, what we're asking for tonight is, you know, we have these three quotes. Typically, this is a, an amount until the Personnel and Policy Committee addresses the, the policy on, uh, the, you know, the bid amounts to try to align that with the town. And that, that's something for, uh, in the, you know, in the near future. The request is for the board to waive the bid requirement so that we can work with these firms to get the best balance between cost benefit and then, and choose one of them and enter into a contract with them to go ahead and, and do this work. And again, what we've, what we've proposed is to use the funding that's available to us out of the 2019, 2020 budget because we removed it from the 2021 budget in order to meet the reductions that were, um, imposed upon us, shall we say, by the Town Council.
All right, so this does need a motion, Tim, right?
Correct. There is, there is a recommended motion that comes with it, yes.
I, I see Colleen's hand and back, and then back to Mr. Dernowski. Go ahead, Colleen.
Okay, I just wanna say, when we did the turf field and we quote unquote renovated the facilities, we had no plan and we, that was done in a vacuum. People were not consulted, the work was done, things were done. And I personally was involved because of my home away from home at the time was the concession stand. Things were done in the concession stand without asking the people involved. There was no planning. So when I hear that you're going to have a master plan for the entire campus, I can't help but think, yay! Because do we know what will happen? Say, for example, if you had to move the softball field down to the football practice field. You know, when you said soil, it made me think down there of the rocky area down there. I broke my elbow falling on a rock down in that, in the practice field. We would have to make significant changes. If we have to move something to get for the lacrosse practice field or the JV, where the JV lacrosse team plays, all that is like renovating an old house. You start painting and then you realize, oh, you need new flooring, you need new doorknobs, blah, 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 blah. One thing leads to another and off you all go to the races. So personally, I know it's a lot of money, but to have somebody that comes in, that can come in and give us a list of what we can do and what we have to do with the Title IX, to have a comprehensive plan moving forward, I think is in the best interest of the taxpayers. Because this time, we won't be wasting money as we did when we put in, what is it, a six lane track when it should have been an eight lane track? I'm just saying. The money that we spent on the track and we didn't even get it up to standard. So I love the idea of a plan. My two cents.
Dave, Dernowski.
Uh, Colleen, I, I just, I disagree with you on, on the track issue. There was no room to put an eight lane track in. That was discussed. And it was decided that the cost involving, you know, moving the bleachers back on both sides, uh, was just insurmountable. And, um, you know, the extra $200,000 wasn't gonna be covered by the town. So we dealt with what we had at the time. Uh, my question though is, uh, if, if you're looking for an approval of the board, I, my question is, has this gone to the Finance Committee yet?
No, it didn't go to the Finance Committee.
Well, you know, something like this, I believe, should have gone at least for their review in order to, you know, come back to the board with some details based upon their questions. That's what we have a Finance Committee for.
Okay, well, it didn't and we brought it directly, we brought it directly to the board because of the timing of it. I believe we got our last quote in probably a week ago or so, Mr. Rister?
Uh, last Friday.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Of the, of the three, of the three quotes. So we've been, we've been working on it for a while. So no, it didn't, which is why we brought it to the board and which is why I provided the full proposals to all, all members of the board and which is why we're having the discussion.
All right, so what I, if I may, um, use my privilege as chairperson, I don't know if I can do this. Um, I am going to, um, ask for a roll call vote on this proposal.
We need a vote.
You have to have a motion first.
To make a motion, uh,
Motion, please.
Move that the Board of Education can waive the bidding process superintendent of school in collaboration with the director of operations, the athletic director and the high school principal to select a provider for the athletic and youth ability study and enter into a contract to perform the professional services identified in that contract and amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
Now, if you would do a roll call vote on that?
Uh, thanks, some additional discussion?
Um.
Yes.
There was a motion.
Additional discussion? I think we've discussed it already.
There was a motion in a second, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
There was a motion in a second. So Mrs. Carmody?
We already had a discussion on it, so I am going to call for a roll call vote on it, if I may.
Mr. Bishowski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Tronowski?
Yes.
Diana?
Oh, there I am, yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dernowski?
No.
Mr. Falvo?
Yes.
Mr. Ashana?
Yes.
Mrs. Carmody?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight guesses and one no.
Thank you. Um, um, next, I'm going on to the school counselor. I, do I see Jen down there?
Yeah.
The agricultural science counselor.
Yeah, I'm here.
You're here, right? Um, do we need any discussion on this?
Can I, can I just present, can I just present this, Mrs. Carmody?
Well, two minutes.
Okay, I, so I, I provided, I'm sorry, Mr. Messina, you had your hand up.
I'm sorry. I unfortunately have to leave because my three younger siblings are nagging me because my parents promised them Dairy Queen and I'm willing to drive them. So I unfortunately have to leave to go drive them to Dairy Queen. I apologize. Um, I'm sure I will see you at the next meeting because I'll be presenting the new rap.
Bye, play, enjoy the Dairy Queen.
Thank you.
See you Tuesday.
Tuesday night. Thank you, thank you very much. And if you wanna drop off Dairy Queen.
Yeah. Swing by. Make it a motorcade.
So, so Mrs. Carmody, the, the short version of this is, uh, you know, I outlined the needs. Mr. Senza provided us with the information on that. The Agricultural Sciences and Technology Education Program, we know, is, is self-sustaining. It's really grant-funded, et cetera. Uh, when tuitions are paid, those tuitions go to the town and the town uses that as the, as the revenue side. We have a pretty diverse population of students.
Yeah.
And, uh, that come from surrounding communities. We have a, a robust number of students that come from Southington. But what we're finding, uh, and credit to Mr. Senza for, for pointing this out, thank you, thank you about that, Jen, is that we do have quite a few students who have some, some needs. They're successful. Our program is hugely successful. It's an amazing program and provides students with some, some real skills that they can, they can apply beyond high school. But we do have quite a few students who have some significant needs in special education areas, require accommodations under Section 504, and it's just a unique population. The funding exists under that ASTE, Agricultural Sciences and Technology Education Grant. It, they, they have provided consistent funding over time and they've increased the funding even in, remember the 2017, 2018 year? remember the 2017, 2018 year when everything was being cut, the funding increased. And it's, the funding has to go only to Agricultural Sciences and Technology Education Programs. So the, the funding, uh, exists and it exists year over year. This would be a grant-funded position if by some, you know, strange occurrence, the, the grant funds weren't available any longer, which, you know, we just don't see happening. Each year, we have to try to figure out what's the best way to use the grant funds that are there that don't, you know, that are in excess of the salaries, et cetera. Um, so this is a, this is a really great opportunity for us to provide some services for those students. And it would have a double benefit because if we had a school counselor that was solely devoted to Agricultural Sciences and Technology students, the benefit is then that takes some of that pressure off of our, our eight other counselors and Mr. Senza's our, our ninth person there and has a caseload as well. So we would have a double benefit for our, our student population. And, and the funding exists, uh, for us to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to move that the Board of Education create a 1.0 full-time equivalent school counselor position funded by the Agricultural Science and Technology Education Grant.
Second.
Discussion. Just one question, uh, Jen, this, would this, uh, person be housed in the Boag Building? Probably, right?
Um, actually, no, they're going to be in the, in the counseling suite. Um, the students will enter. That was, um, with consultation with Marion Standard, um, at the Ag Science.
Oh, you have, I, I only asking that because I didn't think there was any room for any more counselors than, in, in the, but that's not neither here nor there. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second.
You have a question from Dave.
Yeah, just a, a quick question. I know this is a, a grant-funded position. Uh, do we have an idea as to how long this grant will be available?
It's, it's been consistent every year. It's, it's actually in state statute, so it's a statutory grant.
Okay, just want to make sure that, you know, because I know in the past, uh, we've hired people based on grants, the grant ends, and then we end up, uh, having to try to fund a position with no money.
Yeah.
That is, I think the one nice thing is that over the years we've had, um,
I think, as you said, Tim, we've had, we have to find ways to spend money focused just on Ag Science.
So if that were the case, hopefully the money would be there. I, I think the best part about it is it frees up the existing counselors to take on additional, additional caseload and it's paid for by a, by a, by a grant.
No, if that's, that's the way it is, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we have a motion, second, um, do we? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any apologies? Thanks, Jen, for being there. I'm sure you're very, very busy with all the inquiries.
Thank you for supporting it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Jen.
Our agenda is, um, what answer is going to take this, I think, the Correct Teacher Residency Program? At you, Steve?
It's, uh, it's either Tim or I, we can both take it.
Okay.
Mr. Madancy has been unusually quiet this evening. I think, I think he should take this one.
Um, falling asleep, so go ahead.
So, um, as you know, and it is, it is documented within our plan as one of our goals to diversify, you know, our, our teaching staff. And as you know, every district in the state of Connecticut is trying to do that. Our minority student population is 48% in the state of Connecticut. And yet the, uh, you know, the teacher population is 8%. So it's a very competitive and challenging, uh, pool of fuel to get candidates. Um, and we know there's a lot of research, as Tim already shared, that supports uh, the diversity in the classroom, both in the front of the classroom and certainly for students of color seeing adults who look like them in front of the classroom. Um, and I all, I, I do believe that that may be a reason why we have a shortage, to be honest. Many students, I've never saw adults that looked like them in front of the classroom and thought of teaching. This thing has worked very hard. This is connected to a statewide initiative to increase minority teacher candidates in the state. This would be funded, uh, through the Choice Program, but, but this program is very unique. We have two folks in district who both have bachelor's degrees, who are currently paraeducators. The criteria to be accepted in this program is you already have to have a bachelor's degree. But unlike any other teacher preparation program, they will be called teachers in residence. And they will be assigned to mentor teachers and they will do their coursework starting this summer. They will do, uh, a side-by-side teaching experience with that master teacher all of next year in one of our classrooms and do their coursework in the evening and next summer and finish that experience as certified elementary educators and be eligible for a job upon completion. Um, when I spoke with both of them, I did interview, I asked principals for potential candidates they felt would be a fit for this program. Um, they were both so excited and to be honest with you, this is one of those types of situations that shows how difficult it can be. But both of these people are in education because they wanted to be educators, but they couldn't afford to go back to school and take care of their children right now. And the teacher residence program provides them that paid opportunity through, uh, choice funding to go back to school, become certified educators and become, uh, eligible for jobs within Southington. If we do not have jobs available to them, that was one of the criteria, that, that they would be guaranteed a job at the end of this experience. One of the things I pushed back on was, well, there has to be a job for them. Like, we can't, we can't give a job that doesn't exist. We certainly couldn't lay off a staff member to give them a job. Correct assured me that they would be glad and would take our candidates at the end if we didn't have jobs for them here in Southington. Um, it's a wonderful, um, program that they're on their second cohort right now. There are 18 people in Hartford County that are eligible, so we will have two of those 18. Um, Hartford will have 12 of those 18. And then I believe Ellington and one other town, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to misspeak, either Vernon or Manchester has two candidates as well. So we are one of only four towns participating, although all towns were offered this opportunity. Uh, this will be no cost to the board, uh, because it is using, uh, grant funding and it is only for us to ensure, but these are not permanent positions essentially. When they graduate from this cohort, we would have to re-up, if you will, if it was another cohort with more candidates at that time and if grant funding was available. So this just uses those grant funds, um, targeting, uh, our efforts to diversify our teaching.
So that, so it's no cost to us, is, is correct?
Yep.
You, so you need, you need a motion on this?
Oh, Missy has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Dave, and Dave, Missy and Dave.
Missy, I see, Missy, I don't know why I don't see you tonight, but go ahead.
I don't know. It's okay, Sarah. Um, Steve, Steve, my question is, this is a great program and I sit on the Senate in Hartford and we've talked about this quite often. Um, my thing for Southington is, is I think this is a great opportunity, but are we going to open up doors and different, um, avenues to continue on the search that was posed to us a year and a half ago by the NAACP saying, we're not doing enough of recruitment for minorities, right? So this is our segue into this. What else are we going to prepare in the future? You know, to open up and continue on opening doors for minorities, um, that have degrees. I, I, this is a start, but I would like to see the progression. You know, we were just talking about the fields, you know, that five-year plan. What's that plan to continue on and not just let this be one little pebble, but a ripple effect that will continue offering minorities opportunities in our district to continue?
Sure, good question. Uh, and I'm glad you asked that, actually. So as you know, at one of our, when all the subcommittees shared, we had, period, Posamano shared what we've done through Personnel and Human Resources, uh, in a review of our hiring and recruitment practices. And so we have attended, uh, not all, we're actually posting. Um, we have invited candidates, uh, minority candidates to serve that the state for education provides. Um, and we actually have diversified our teaching workforce prior to just these two teacher residents. This teacher residence program is just another effort, if you will, to continue to work, it is not the only effort. Um, and we've also talked, one of the things we talked about, even with our own administrators, the questions that actually ask our teacher candidates now, uh, within the interview process and have a hope of their understanding knowledge around diversity, equity and inclusion. And then lastly, around that, what I would say is that the training of staff so that when we do hire uh, minority candidates or teachers of color, we have a support system for those staff members. Because another thing that you are aware of, that, that, that sometimes if you don't have a lot of colleagues that uh, look like themselves or can relate or identify with them, then they don't stay. So it is also not only about recruitment and hiring, but it is about retention as well of, of our candidates that we.
Yeah, and can I, if, can I add something to that? May I add something to that? This is, this is actually not the start. This, this is in, this is in addition to, to some of the things that Steve was mentioning. This piece is a, is a, it's a significant piece for us. When it first came to my attention through the Hartford Area Superintendent's Association, through the Capital Region Education Council, we, I raised my hand and we, and we jumped on it because that was a new piece for us. Because we've already begun having, uh, Michelle Posamano, who's the Human Resources Manager, become involved in the Minority Teacher Recruitment Forums, et cetera. We'd already gone that route. We've included folks who are individuals of color in our interview committees. When we did our administrative, uh, interviews last year, I think you, some of you may recall, Steve and I were involved in 104 interviews by this time last year. Uh, we literally pulled out our candidates who had identified, who had voluntarily identified as minority candidates. So we've already, we've taken a number of steps over the course of the last year and a half. So to think of this as the only thing that we're doing or as the beginning of it, it's not tech, is technically not accurate because there are a lot of other pieces here that we already started working on. And we started working on that really in conjunction with some of the work that we did with the, with the Coalition, quite frankly.
And you, that we did last year, we had coalition members on the interview committees.
Correct.
One of those.
We did it. Right, so this is just, this, this is just another piece to that.
Dave Dernowski, was your hand up on this?
Yes.
Uh, I take it that these are full-time positions while they're going through this, uh, training program? Are they, are they classed as a teacher or are they classed as a para? Uh, what are they classed as?
So they will, the reason that they will be considered unaffiliated staff at this point because they're not, they're not certified, they can't be in the Teachers Association, but they're not doing the work of a para. Um, so they will be resigning from their para positions, um, to do.
Okay, who sets the pay scale? Is that by us or is that by the state?
So my conversation with Jerry D'Amello, basically the goal was to get them to what they were making as paraeducators, which is why we, we agreed with the salary that was committed with the educator marketing.
Any other questions on that?
Dave Falvo has his hand up.
Okay.
Okay. I don't, I don't favor Missy anywhere, so.
Yeah, so, um, I know there was some mention of some steps that, um, the district is taking to recruit minority teacher candidates. And I attended last week, I received an email, so I went, um, to a minority teacher recruiting event. It was held virtually, obviously, and it had various districts throughout Connecticut and I noticed Southington wasn't there. So I wanted to know, like, what specific steps, what specific forums are we involved in as a district to recruit minority teacher candidates? Um, I know, I know some districts, um, have gone above and beyond, specifically, um, Stanford. I know the demographics of Stanford, um, are vastly different than ours. But, um, what they did, I participated in an, an event where they actually invited all the minority teacher candidates in, uh, on this one-day job fair. They took the candidates throughout the district, um, held various professional developments for the candidates and they got to mingle with the administrators and the staff. And I thought it was a great, uh, event. And the reason why I bring that up is, is maybe that's thing Southington could think of or some, um, or some similar event like that. And, and, um, it's not easy to recruit minority teacher candidates.
Right.
In my college classes, I would always talk about this in class, especially in my education philosophy class, that there's a shortage of minority teacher candidates. So what could we do as a district to go even one step farther and help encourage our minority students to become teachers someday? What could we do to entice them to join the field and maybe someday offer them a job in Southington Public Schools once they graduate and, um, get certified to teach?
Okay, that's a good question. Um, a couple of different things we've done specifically, I think related along the lines of what you experienced last week. The job fair at the Two Rivers Magnet School that was held in person last year, we had attended. We had attended Yukon, we had attended one held at Mark T. Sheen and we had attended one at Norwalk. We also were going to attend one at University of Bridgeport this spring, but that one was canceled obviously because of the pandemic. Um, and so we are at the, the events that we're aware of and we're able to attend. Um, that is something we've been actively doing. I do love your idea of, of kind of a, an open house, if you will, for minority candidates within our district to give them that opportunity where there is not, because, yeah, you're right. At those fairs, everybody's dying for the attention of the candidates. But in addition, one of the things that we did last year at the fairs we attended, we, we solicited the names, uh, in the certification areas of those folks that we were able to connect with and interact with and have conversations with in certification areas. And so they tended to sharing of the work of the Coalition, uh, to get them to realize that we are working on this. And what we did in instances where we had names of those folks who we had met at the job fairs, who met in, in areas of vacancies, we invited them to apply personally as a district, not just by a job posting online. Uh, Michelle had reached out to some of those candidates. Um, and then lastly, as Tim had said, uh, running the filters through the AppleTrack system has been highly successful for us because it allows us to take a second look, if you will, a closer look, especially in positions where there are a lot of certified applicants, specifically at the minority candidates. One of the challenges we have with that is, I do think, and David, I don't know, maybe you would have experienced i- if, if this was ever advice that you were given during any of the classes, well, they told us, they were told not to identify because it could be used essentially against them. That districts that maybe had an implicit bias or had, were discriminatory nature, uh, weren't looking for those types of candidates and they wouldn't get interviews, uh, based on, you know, race or ethnicity. And so we don't always know who those candidates are that are applying for jobs, you know, so it does make it sometimes more difficult. I think putting the statement on our job postings that we're encouraging minority candidates to apply, that hopefully encourages them to identify so that we know who they are and we can, we can offer them that extra opportunity.
Yeah.
I really liked the idea of the open house. I think that, that's a, that's a nice personal touch by, uh, Stanford.
Yeah, wh- what could we do, um, to, the second half of the question, what could we do, um, like, for example, at the high school to entice minority students that we have in the district to become teachers? What programs could we initiate as a district to do that?
So there's, there is a program that the, we were actually starting to meet this year and, and I'm, I'm going to defer maybe a senior member of the board here who might recall this, uh, any of you guys are out there. It was a program, was it Train for Tomorrow through the Chamber?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I, I can see that from here. Uh, Mr. Senza, Mr. and I had met with the new leadership of the Chamber and a couple of fair members who were actively involved in our program where we could provide students opportunities to learn more about the professions that exist within the community and really things like job shadowing and internship experiences would certainly encourage those students to consider this as a profession.
Zaya, didn't your mother run something like that?
Yes, she did, for a few years, yes.
Yeah, where they went out into the community to, to, you know.
Professional land in education, yeah, exactly. And the last part of that, along those lines, David, not only our own high school seniors, um, but the other part to that is we have, uh, I'm a, I'm part of the Executive Leaders Group through Central Connecticut State University, where they are actively working. Central is too, to recruit students right within their student center and through some of the classes that the kids are taking where they're undeclared to consider, um, as a profession. Again, many of them don't consider it. They don't think it's for them, um, or, but it is, you know, and we need them.
Thank you, Steve, for, and Tim, for really bringing this to our district. I think it's important. I was raised in Waterbury. My first teacher of color, my junior year in high school, junior in high school. My first teacher of color in, in our city. You know, so, um, the amount of minorities interested in teaching goes way back and for lots of reasons. So, um, hopefully.
And so um hopefully we can again be a spark to, you know, set forth some good trends. Thank you.
Well, this is certainly a beginning. So do we need approval? We do we?
Yes, yeah, we were looking to um.
May may I make a motion?
Go ahead, Joe.
Move that the Board of Education approve two one full time equivalent 12 month teacher resident positions as described in the attached documentation funded by the Open Choice Grant at the rate of pay proposed by your administration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, are there any opposed?
Dave D., you're up.
You know, does anybody want a cat? She wants me to go to bed.
I know, so do I, Dave.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Oi.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I never got to see Dave and Missy.
We'll work on that.
Or James, I don't see James either.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, all.
Carmody.
Good night.
Bye.
Terry.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, Linda.
Meg, Meg, Terry. Good night, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Good night, all.
What are the walls? Hey, good night, remember?
We're good.
Night, Mary, night.
Okay, Mrs. Carmody.